All right.
All right, I'll go ahead and call the Nottingham Planning Board meeting for Wednesday, September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three to order. It looks like our recording might not be happening tonight, so we'll take some, uh, some good, good notes as much as possible. So we're gonna go, uh, we have a few items on the agenda tonight. Continuances that have been requested on, um, two of them, so we'll just take items in order as, as we go. Uh, the first case is twenty-two dash zero zero seven dash S I T. Oh, you know what? I'm gonna back up before we do that. Go, go, everybody go around the room and introduce themselves, starting on my right.
Robert Davies, alternate.
Teresa Bascom.
John Moore.
Ian McKinnon.
Edward Veal.
Charlie Anderson.
Uh, and Mr. Davies will be seated and voting tonight for Ms. Mooney. Um, so now we'll, we'll take, uh, case twenty-two zero zero seven S I T, Concrete Products, one sixty Old Turnpike Road. Application from David Beatty of BSC Group, representing Concrete Products of London area, requesting approval to build a precast concrete manufacturing facility. The property is located at one sixty Old Turnpike Road, Nottingham, New Hampshire, identified as tax map three, lot two dash two. Um, so this was a continuation request from the applicant to extend, uh, the, the, um, conditions of approval, uh, requesting a three-month, uh, extension, and we have a letter on file. Before we go on from that, I'm gonna butter to this case, so I'm going to recuse myself, and Mr. McKinnon will, uh, take over his chair for this, this one.
I'm just reading that, there's a section here. Um, so let's see, I think everybody was here except Teresa, right, for this one, so...
I know nothing about this.
I thought we were continuing.
They're, it's, it's, they're just requesting an extension for three months, so to update, there's been some emails, so there was some back and forth with the applicant, with the fire chief, to get final sign-off on the fire, the cistern. Uh, there was communication with the previous fire chief, and then obviously with what's occurred, there was a delay there. The interim chief, I believe originally they were proposing concrete cistern, they're a concrete plant, so it made sense for them, and we're gonna look into, I guess, what we've done in some previous cases too, kind of, 'cause I'm, I'm curious about that, but the town, subdivision regulations do require a, a plastic or fiberglass tank for the fire cisterns. Um, so the interim chief, uh, they're kind of coordinating with him, um, and so they, the applicant has, that was one of the delays that was kind of causing some delays, as of like, in the last day or two. They've chose to just go with the fiberglass tank per the subdivision regulation, so now the only thing that's left is to essentially get final plans. So they're gonna just clean up the final plans and details. Uh, they've met the other, uh, conditions of approval, they've got their DOT permit, stuff like that, so...
Okay.
That came in quite a while ago. They got an A, they did get an AOT permit as well. So this is really, that's why they've only requested a three-month extension, because they're at the point that they just need some time, probably get plans to us, so that those can get signed on the file, so...
Okay.
I think there was some, there was some legal opinions shared just about, uh, we had questions about granting time extensions, because technically we're just over the one-year mark of our expiration. Um, if you guys wanna go into non-public, it was similar to what, I mean, I could say, I know that it, it's almost discretionary of the board to see, you know, how close it is, um, on a case-by-case basis, see how close it is to that one-year mark, and either choose to, uh, accept the late request for the time extension, or the alternative is they have to submit a completely new application. It'd be the same materials that we've already approved. Um, they might be subject to, the only time you might require that is that, you know, maybe if zoning significantly changed or something like that, but, uh, it, it seems to come down to the discretion of the board to choose, uh, if we wanna accept this request, even though it is technically just after the, the one-year mark on the approval.
Why couldn't we just extend it for two months?
They asked for three, I mean, we could.
The zoning won't change anyways, because of the fact that that has to go to a vote for any zoning events, it's not gonna happen until March, so three months will be...
Right, so any, yeah, and all the zoning that we, that did change between the approval and now doesn't affect, um...
Right.
This project.
Mm-hmm.
So they requested three months, and I think it's more so just to hopefully, they might only need two, but they want a month buffer in case there's an issue getting plans signed or something like that, so, uh, there's no recording of plans, it's just, uh, it's a site plan, so the board will sign the plans and they'll go on file. So, I mean, my, my opinion is it was kind of, it was a complex project for a while, too, they had to go get an AOT permit after, actually, the approval's a condition of approval, they had to coordinate with AOT, so, um, my opinion is that it, it's fine, they have been in communication with us over the last year through all these updates, so, um, essentially we just need to take a vote to accept the request for extension, and we can just acknowledge that we realize it was after the one-year mark, but we feel that it doesn't change the scope of the approval.
Ian, do you know what the date of the one-year mark is? Off the top of your head?
Off the top of my head, um, July twenty-seventh, and so, and then for about the last month, they've been talking about this extension, so that was within that, um, so July twenty-seventh was what the decision was dated, uh, when, when we voted, and, uh...
July twenty-seventh of this year?
Last year.
That, I was gonna say.
So July twenty-seventh of this year, technically, the...
The one-year mark.
Yeah, it would've been the one-year...
So we're already past the one-year?
Yeah.
Correct, so that's where, that's where the opinion came from, is that the yes, that it was beyond the one-year, but they, uh, we were, the opinion was to, it's, it's the discretion of the board, but that, um, you have to look at the case as a whole, where we, I think every single month we've been receiving feedback on this case, updates on permits, DOT, it took a while to get DOT for them, that was like a s- eight-month process. Um, so that's where the opinion was to, obviously, we have to review it on a case-by-case basis, but, um, really, we have to determine if, if we require a new application, uh, would it change, like, requiring an application would, is what's changed since then that might change how we made a decision on the case, so, and that would be like maybe major zoning or site plan regulations, which we haven't had any to affect the commercial segment.
Essentially, what you're saying is, it makes no sense to deny their requests where there wouldn't be any major changes in zoning that would affect the decision that's already been made.
And no changes to the plans, they actually ended up pretty much, they got approval for what they presented to us, 'cause they, um, had already designed their stormwater system to meet AOT, that's the biggest thing, so, um, it's just that, that detail of, technically the conditions expired on July twenty-seventh, but the opinion we received is that it's up to the board to accept that late request. Um, they've been talking about the late, the extension request for a couple weeks now, um, hinting at it, dealing with the fire cistern.
It should've been back in July.
Yes, right. Um, so essentially, we just need to make a motion either way to accept their request for extension, um...
Ian, just, um, some, uh, clarification on the three months, when does the clock stop? Does it, does the clock stop at the three months from the July twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three, that we would extend the three months? Does it extend to tonight? Does it extend to this September sixth letter that they've sent? Or is it discretionary to us?
I think it would be starting tonight, right? 'Cause they already got, we already gave them to this date.
Yeah, we put them on the agenda for tonight, um, 'cause the, the date of the, like, so the, the decision of the case would've been the date of our meeting, so we try and use dates of the meeting of when that vote was taken. Um, I mean, if we wanna be on the safe side, we could just say three months from today, and then that would, somebody could backtrack the math and say that was four and a half months from the expiration date or something like that, whatever that comes out to be. So we could probably just state, you know, kind of have that be part of the motion, it's three months from September thirteenth, and I don't think that, the, they've indicated that we might see plans next week, so they might not need all that time, but it's understandable that they're asking for that buffer.
Would you like a motion?
Please.
Um, vice chair, I make a motion that we approve a three-month extension as of September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, to case twenty, twenty-two zero zero seven S I T, Concrete Products, one sixty, Old Turnpike Road.
We have a motion from Ms. Anderson.
I'll second.
Okay. The motion is second, um, all is in favor of approving the three-month extension from today's date, September thirteenth, um, say aye?
Aye.
Unanimous, all right. So that one's good. Next case.
Welcome back.
Hey.
All right, so I'll resume, uh, my role as chair as we take on the next case. Uh, this is case twenty-three dash zero zero four S U B, Residence at Fort Hill, Smoke Street and Fort Hill Road, this is also a continued case, uh, it's an application for Berry Surveying and Engineering on behalf of Owl Ridge Builders, requesting a twenty-five-foot lot, open space subdivision. Um, this applicant has also requested that the case be continued to Wednesday, September twenty-seventh, uh, two thousand twenty-three, uh, to allow for more time to incorporate feedback from the towns engineer, uh, in, into their plans, and I think some other feedback that they had received. Is there any discussion from the board on that?
Sorry, they, they want the twenty-seventh?
Yep.
I'll make the motion that we accept the request for continuance for case number twenty-three dash zero zero four S U B to the September twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three meeting at seven P M.
Second.
That's a motion by, uh, Mr. McKinnon, a second by Ms. Anderson, to continue the case twenty-three zero zero four S U B to September twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three at seven P M. Is there any further discussion? All is in favor, please say aye.
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 All is opposed, that motion carries, um, where are we at, six-zero?
Yep.
Six-zero, okay. And again, for anybody that might be here for some of these cases, we, if we get a request to continue, uh, we've been trying to put it on our agenda to alert the public that that's happening, um, to, to try to save people time from coming in, um, so if we do get a request ahead of time, we've put it at the bottom of the agenda for consideration of the board. Um, just point of order, on the prior case, I didn't make note, just because I don't know if anything's being recorded. Who made the motion for the continuance on the prior case?
I made the motion.
I seconded it.
Second, John, and that was a five-zero. Got it, thank you. Uh, next case is twenty-three dash zero zero seven D R Falzone, Raymond Road, it's also a continued case, uh, application from Joseph Falzone, requesting a design review hearing for a twenty lot proposed open space subdivision on Raymond Road, property identifies tax map sixty-nine, lot seventeen. Um, so for design reviews, applicants are allowed, I think it's three, three, uh, visits to us for a design review within ninety days, or a hundred and eighty days, I have to look at the timeline, does applicants, definitely within that time, uh, we continue to tonight to allow the board to get some, uh, uh, opinion from legal town council of, about how changed the last year's, uh, zoning ordinance might impact this case, um, we do have that back, so we can go into non-public to discuss that, if anybody would like, but before we do that, uh, Mr. Falzone, and I see you all are here, anything new on your side for us, or just here to hear us?
No, because, yeah, just, we can't really go further until we hear from you.
Got it, all right. Um, so if anybody would like to make a motion to go into non-public to discuss that, it's RSA ninety-one A three, I believe, ninety-one A.
We put letters...
I'll tell you in a minute. Sorry. We've done non-public more this year than we have the other year.
It used to be L.
And just so the public's aware, so anytime we receive counsel, input from town council, it's considered privileged information, uh, that's something that we're allowed to discuss as a board in non-public session, um, to preserve that client, uh, attorney confidentiality. Uh, ninety-one A three, non-public sessions, and then it is... Oh, is everybody? Do we know town council isn't? All right. There we go, uh, L, sorry, so it's, uh, ninety-one A three, Roman numeral two, L, consideration of legal advice provided by the council.
Hello, you said?
Yes.
Chairman, I make a motion that we enter into non-public for RSA ninety-one A colon three two L.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion by Ms. Anderson, a second by Mr. Davies, to enter into non-public, um, this will be a roll call vote, I'll start on my right, Mr. Davies?
Aye.
Mrs. Bascom?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Uh, Mr. McKinnon?
Aye.
Ms. Anderson?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well, so instead of having you all leave the room, we'll step out for a moment to discuss that, and, uh, we'll be back. Be back shortly.
If anybody signs, uh, signs, she, so, so I can...
Let's grab this.
I've been doing it twenty-three years.
To the sport, to the, I don't know, I certainly know we are. I'm doing a private with Tom Morton, I was here a couple months ago with Tommy Morton.
When is, USA Springs, yeah, no, Tom. How's that going?
Yeah, he certainly had much with you at breakfast, you know, months ago, and a lot of your kids are friends or something?
Yeah, yeah, the two of them.
Tommy, Tommy, I'm floor mates in, in UNH, and then fraternity brothers.
Oh, usually?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Known him since September of seventy-three.
Wow. So, has he done anything with the building? I haven't talked to him.
No. No, he's, he's, uh, he's been dealing with some personal issues and...
I heard.
Yeah. I think he's just kinda, a little bit of flutter right now, you know, so he's...
Yeah, we're supposed to go see his plane, he showed me a picture of it.
I think he, I, he's either selling it or selling shares in it or something, or he's, well, he wants, I told him not to buy in the first place. I said, "Buy into one of those corporate deals, and you know, you can take a plane whenever you want."
Right.
You know, you can have it.
Well, he's got a place in Nantucket, too, doesn't he?
She got, well, he, they do, but she goes there, and he goes to Montauk in Maine, and they got a place, uh, he's got a place up in Madison, New Hampshire, um...
Oh, that big old house he bought?
Yeah, and we go up, like, the fraternity guys go up there.
How is that?
It's pretty cool, it's, we're up on a bluff, a little bit of, look, whatever it is, Silver Lake or something, it's...
I know Scott went to go look at it, he said he needs to...
He said what?
Scott went to go look at it, let's go.
Not the, it's not the one that, that it's not the one I'm, oh, one I'm talking about, it's, it's in Madison, it's beautiful.
Oh, this must be the other piece that he bought, three hundred and fifty acres or so?
Oh, yeah, 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 that's up in, uh, that's up in, like, Water of the Valley area, but he just, he just flipped that, just, just last month.
'Cause he had a patent, right?
Yeah.
Is that the guy that took it?
No.
Oh.
No, somebody altogether.
Well, that's good, I know he wanted to get rid of that.
I told him not to do that one, too, it's just, there's just a lot going on.
Yeah, he's a nice guy.
Yeah, he's a, it's like you, he's a self-made guy.
Yeah.
When we were kids, he would say, "I don't know what to do next," and I said, "Just keep your head down and keep on going," you know? And he's good at that, and he doesn't, you know, he's, he's like you, he just doesn't, he's polite, but he doesn't take no, you know, he just does what he has to do to get, get stuff done.
So have you been in this town before?
I've been in this town with Tom, that's the only time that I remember.
Oh. But he got a great deal in the USA Springs.
Yeah, yeah.
Great deal.
Oh, yeah. We got, well, he got, he bought it fairly cheap and then sold the cell tower, but, the cell tower bought him out, he got most of his money back.
Right. Then, now you say, you didn't know the town council when they sent you her name?
I don't remember you sending me her name.
Oh, yeah.
If you did, I forget who it was.
Yeah.
But if, if it, I think I would've remembered if it was somebody I knew and dealt with.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't see how you can say anything different, other than go to the VA, and for what?
Well, if they say that, I'm gonna question them, I'm gonna, number one, ask them, can I talk to town council?
Right.
I'm gonna ask them to explain how they come to that, because I, you know, I can go through this with them, but, you know, if, you know, the law's pretty clear.
We have a lot of, because my property, I have a, for your priority.
Non-conformal lot of record can be used if the code enforcement officer determines that there's not potential health or safety items due to inadequate areas for on-site waste disposal, we have those, water supply, and we have access for police and fire protection. Yeah. And the other, only other factors are that in nineteen-seventy, you know, they created these lots, they're all built, there's nothing we can do.
I was here, I was, the night of nine eleven.
Oh, were you really?
They wouldn't do it to me.
They wouldn't what? They wouldn't cancel? No. I remember exactly where I was when I heard about the first plane, I was walking, I used to own the building at four oh two State Street, across from a library and restaurant, and I was walking from...
Is that a house?
It was a house years ago, back in the eighties, it was like a ship captain's house, and that was three condos, um, I was walking to one of my secretary's desks, they were in the back of the building, and I was in the front of the building, and I walked back and she was like this, and she, you know, she wasn't, she didn't see it, but she was listening to the radio, so we turned on the TV, and, you know, sure enough, that was when the first, and then everything stopped, and I think, I think we closed for the day, and, you know, nobody's doing anything.
Oh, my, my wife was pissed.
I don't blame her, yeah. I wa, I don't watch sixty minutes very much, I don't really care for it, but they, the whole sixty minutes the other night was, was all about that, it was really good.
Yeah, they did a good job on that.
So I've heard recently that there's sort of this conspiracy theory that buildings like that don't collapse on themselves, and there's some theory that somebody set it off. I, I don't buy it, but that's, you know...
It's hard to say, it's like, it's like...
You want to know that's what I mean?
No.
You're gonna pick the road right?
Are you driving, right?
What?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
That's, we're looking, we were, the yellow house.
Oh, you have, you got our backyard?
No, you're not, across from our seat, where they have, uh, really...
Oh, is your property? Or that, um, you couldn't leave, so you're right across from the gravel place?
I don't understand why this guy couldn't say water. Just doesn't make any sense to me.
He's, he's not really up to date.
Is he new?
Euros and pounds.
Two years? No, I get it. What I would've done is said, "I gotta check with my people, I gotta check with fire, I gotta check with police," and if they gave me the okay, I'd say, "Okay."
But still, my thing is, why can't town council say anything else?
I don't know. My worry is the town council says, "Well, unless we get that from the code enforcement officer, that we got any issues," so I'll explore that with them if we can.
But, you know, his answer was, "Well, we want the flood, but we're pleased about it."
Well, who are you gonna talk to about water? We got wells that are way offsite, and he's just...
Jim. What's it say? Oh, yeah. I don't even have one of those, look, I just got a regular old generic pen. I can't stand those, take the cap off, have to put it on.
Yeah, I know, and then you put them in your pocket and they go.
Right. Now, what is that? The one that's, who does it say she is, she's from?
I don't know.
S P?
Something rep, something representative.
Regional Planning Commission, Representative.
But she's on the board, she must be a resident, I thought this was the plan.
Well, you, I did, too.
Uh, the left or right on the, the left house and right house on that, right?
So we got enough coffee to show them.
Yeah, and I got full-size ones, too.
And I'm, I'm your neighbor.
You just bought?
Yeah. Yeah, bought, yeah, yeah.
You got the Waco, I call it the Waco House. That's what it was. Right? So you're doing much with John O'Neill, or?
No.
Now, someone said they have the, when, when I worked on for the SOAR.
For which one?
You know, the SOAR.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, I thought the Green and Company was doing that, doing another over fifty-five or over sixty-two up in, on the corner of Breakfast Hill and Lafayette.
They wouldn't have to be buying it from her, would they?
Uh, yeah, from Carolyn, what's her name?
I think John's doing it with them, but I might be wrong.
He might, well, he's been doing some stuff with Green, I know he did the project in, um, Greenland, you know, the other, over whatever the age restricted, he did that with Green.
The one you are in?
No, the one, the only other one in Greenland.
Oh, oh, that's right, he did that.
I'm doing some work in Nottingham, and he's got a project going up there.
Who?
John O'Neill, I don't know who with, but, um, it's pretty nice, it's like, right next to the new town, Kent Hall in Barrington.
Yeah, I saw one.
Huh? Oh, did you?
Well, that's mine.
Yeah.
I have a permit.
That's a, that's a nice, uh, it's nice up there, it goes up the hill, you got some great views of the valley and stuff.
I donated the land for the town.
Oh, did you really? Yeah. I'm doing work for the town of Nottingham.
Excuse me?
I'm doing work for the town of Nottingham.
Barrington.
I mean, Barrington, yeah, Barrington, yeah.
Oh, what, on what?
Um, they got a bunch of stuff going, they got, they're trying to deal with the hospital, trying to deal with, you know, get a new library, they're trying to do, kind of come up with a town center area.
The guy who, uh, the guy who, uh, the guy who...
Would you come for a, 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 for
So basically what we're getting at and where we're trying to figure out was how the new zoning ordinance, uh, regulation for the, regarding a vegetated buffer for any new roads, uh, for budding lots. And, um, kind of what the determination was, especially after talking with our town council, um, is that, I'll say it kind of plainly, so there was a prior subdivision of this, of this parcel done in the nineteen seventies, it was Plan D dash seven seven one four. That created the lots on the front, also created that fifty foot right away. At that time, that fifty foot right away was given a name, Quartz Hill Road. So this has become, that's actually a street, uh, or a town road, not a town road, sorry, that implies town ownership. So basically, the subdivision that was done then dedicated a, a road called Quartz Hill Road between what was then Lot Four, which is now map sixty-nine Lot Sixteen, and Lot Seven, uh, which is now map sixty-nine Lot Nineteen. The nineteen ninety-one plan that the applicant, uh, had represented to us as well, does not have an impact on our analysis at all, uh, because that was approved and revoked ten years later. So based on the facts that we have before us as a board, uh, Quartz Hill Road is neither new nor within the proposed subdivision. And then has not been, although it has not been accepted as a town, um, by the town, Quartz Hill Road has existed since the nineteen seventies and was part of the subdivision that occurred at the same time. Therefore, our Article Two C two D, uh, which is the vegetative buffer from new, new roads, does not apply to the application before the board. One thing for the applicant to look up, when I looked up that prior plan that was done in the seventies, it's the seventies, so the planning board recordings were a lot different. Up at the top right, it said, uh, lots, you know, these numbers are not the right numbers, but it was like lots one, three, five, seven, nine, or something like that, were disapproved, two, four, six, eight, ten were approved. But then, there's a book page reference after that, and there's a two-page memo from the town that's recorded with the registry saying that after that record, that was, plan was recorded, those other lots were approved as well. So there might be two lots behind those front two lots that were approved by that subdivision.
Are you saying it's like kind of in this little, almost looks like it's left?
Do you have the, uh, I'm gonna step up here just to...
Yeah, I think it's a knowledge.
For everybody what I'm talking about?
We have a big...
I have that plan, that old plan right here.
Yeah, perfect. But basically what I'm getting at is these two lots, if you look at the nineteen seventies plan, these two, I believe ended up being approved afterwards. There's a memo on file, so what's that, Lot Six? Lot six? Doesn't, does, see this where it says page, see this book page?
Yeah.
If you look at that page, it's a two-page letter from the town. To the registry. I'm ending this, saying that all these lots are approved.
Just to carry that forward.
So that'll be some cleanup.
Yeah, I know you said, and when I get, that this one, you know, it wasn't part of your analysis, but it, it, as you can see later on, when this came along, these lots, which were approved, were, were, these lot lines were abandoned, so now this is part of this. So we'll, we'll clean it up before you guys.
Yeah, so go forward, right, okay.
By the way, I'm Tim Phoenix, I'm counsel to Joe.
Appreciate that, so, uh, for the audience over there, anybody here that's looking, these are the plans that I'm referring to. This is the plan in the nineteen seventies that was approved by the town, or is on, so we're on TV. This very clearly had a name, this fifty foot right away, Quartz Hill Road, um, and that is what is impacting, or providing this program to go for variance from that, so.
So what, so excuse me?
Yep.
Over the two lots that were also approved?
These two lots here, may I, Mr. Chair?
Please, thank you.
Yeah, these two lots here were part of this overall subdivision, there was some stuff that I wasn't really familiar with about what was approved and what was not, but eventually they were. But then later, the board's, the council was not considering this later plan that was done, that plan that I just showed you was back nineteen seventy, this was nineteen ninety. It was approved, but they never built it, so it was discontinued, um, by, by the town ten years later. But these are the two lots, they ended up, they ended up owned by this, and these lot lines were abandoned, so all of this is one lot now. Those two old lots that were, are sort of attached to this lot that Joe's trying to develop now. This is not Joe's proposal, this is the one from nineteen ninety.
So that, for me, I guess that brings up the question, if those were, if that plan was a subdivision plan and it was revoked, that would have been a lot line adjustment?
As, as I understand...
So that'll be the, that'll be the piece that needs clarification.
That lot line adjustment, the abandonment happened when that plan was approved, so then when it was revoked, the lots that were created were gone, but it was still now all one big lot, including those two, that's how I interpreted it.
Yeah, because lot line adjustments, in my understanding, are never actually official until there's a deed passed.
Well, they weren't, they weren't, they were abandoned, those lot lines were abandoned. Like, that's how I interpret it, but we'll clean it up and make sure you guys...
And the big, the big thing there too is obviously the surveyor will have to confirm to all that anyway.
Exactly.
Yeah, so.
Yep.
So, let them deal with that.
So that's, so this again is a design review, so it's more binding, it's more formal than a conceptual, so that's why the applicant has, you know, slightly engineered plans and more information before us, we can have a higher level discussion. And if the applicant decides to move forward with a plan, they would submit a formal application, no, re-noticing to all the butters would go out again, um, so we're here to... Identify as much as possible for the applicant to be aware of and applicant to ask questions, to try to get guidance on, on their future, uh, plans as they, as they look to move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, you might want to formally conclude the design review process.
Yeah, if, it, well, I was gonna say, it is technically a public hearing, so we do usually allow, and there's a number of individuals in the room.
That's fine.
I always try to allow as much feedback as possible because I think it helps guide the applicant to get it out now instead of later on. So I'll go ahead and open the public hearing for this, it is seven forty?
Yes.
If anybody would like to come forward, would like to speak for or against, uh, or just ask general questions about this application, I ask you to come forward, please state your name, um, and address, and just address your comments or questions to the board, please.
Good evening, my name's Nate Burnett, I am in a butter at two oh five Raymond Road. I'm not a lawyer, uh, and can't give a legal opinion, but from a public and community engagement standpoint, um, understanding that there are implications, um, around the decision, um, to not go through a review process for a waiver, um, I, I think it's potentially ill-advised. Um, there are reasons why, um, you know, that, um, regulations have changed and there are higher standards, um, for, for building roads now. So you can, I think the, the legal opinion is obviously really important, um, but I think there, there may be other considerations, um, you know, for, for you to take into account. Um, and, and, you know, it may be worth considering, um, eve, um, you know, despite what legal counsel has said.
Yeah, thank you. Any fellows that'd like to speak for or against or ask general questions?
Hi, Jim Stevens, I'm in a butter. Uh, I just had a question, I was curious where exactly in the process we were, there were some comments about being in design review, you know, we were, butters were notified, and just want to make sure that somehow this doesn't count as that design review process, and just want to clarify for myself where we are in that process.
Oh, sure, yeah, so a design review is a, is a technical term, um, for the planning board, so we have three levels of applications, we have a conceptual, which is completely non-binding. Butters don't get notified about conceptual, someone could come in, say they have an idea for a lot, want to do something, or a business, or whatever. It allows the board and applicant to have some non-binding discussion. A design review is more formal, it requires a, a, an application and a fee to the town, a butter notification, um, and it allows some higher level discussion to occur, to help, uh, a potential applicant to, um, to get more input on, on something that they're planning, before they spend all their money on full engineering, full surveying, uh, and all the pieces that go along with that, there's quite a bit of cost, especially for a subdivision. So a design review, we're in that process, so the, uh, and these are optional to the applicant, they don't have to come before us for a design review, they can always come before us with just a full application. So if the applicant tonight, I believe they can, can be here for, for three design, three meetings within one design review, uh, before they have to reapply and get a, uh, re-notice everything. So if the applicant chooses tonight that this is sufficient and they would like us to close the design review for this one, that would be a vote by the board. And at that point, the applicant can walk away and, and another gavel, they could complete, you know, engineering and then come before the board with, with a full application, at which time, or another design review, at which time, it would get re-noticed again, meaning the butters would get a legal notification from, uh, through the postal service and, uh, and as we go up where they're required to.
Okay, um, there were some concerns at the last meeting from the board around the yield plan, I was curious, does that need to be addressed at the formal application with the full engineering, is that when that would be addressed?
That's when the applicant would, yeah, so the applicant has a, there's a lot of steps between where we're at now in a full application, uh, you know, a lot of surveying, engineering, and things of that nature. And, and I know that applicant, that was, that was brought up by a number of the, the board and the public, and the applicant was well aware that, you know, yes, this was just kind of a, I don't want to speak for them, to show what could be done potentially, um, but they know they have to show the full build-out analysis.
Great, thank you for your opportunity and the time.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Good evening, my name's Ken Hoffman, I'm in a butter at eleven Dollar Fdam Road, and my wife and I have lived in our home for about thirty-seven years now. At the first meeting I came to, there was a lot of discussion and concerns about the, the river, the ecosystem, the light noise pollution, the added strain on infrastructure, um, and my wife and I share those same concerns. I think most importantly for us is the reason we've stayed in Nottingham for thirty-eight years, is because it's rural, it's a village, it's, um, the character of the town is what we really want. We could move to Stratton or Epping or Manchester, but we want to be in a rural community, and when I look at the website for the vision from the planning board, that's what it talks about, is, is the, the character of our town. So that's what concerns me with a cul-de-sac going in, whether it's across the street from me or anywhere in Nottingham, is what will the future of our town look like, so, that's a concern I have. Thanks for listening.
Good evening, my name's Melina Sitzinger, I moved to Nottingham about a year and a half ago, and this is actually the first night that I'm meeting many of my neighbors, and was just informed last night that this was happening. So it's only fitting that I'm following Jim, who's been here for twenty-eight years. I purposely chose Nottingham because of its rural nature and intentions of not moving into a neighborhood where there would be divisions and codex acts and, um, I work about an hour and a half south in, in Massachusetts in a hospital as a social worker, so, character is very important to me, and that's why I chose Nottingham, and I'm, I'm just... Hoping that folks will, will recognize that that is a very detailed, important piece for folks that are moving to this area, is to have the town honor that, that this is a rural area, and the zoning should consider that factor, so, just wanted my voice to be heard, thank you.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Hello. Do I have to say my name?
Name and address, please.
Sorry, Teresa Ennis, I live at one Dollar Fdam Road. My concern is what the previous people have spoken about, the character of Nottingham, but also like the additional impact as far as traffic, uh, the street light, things like that, but also too, my main concern is about the school. With all these houses going in and presumably families, uh, every year it seems like the school wants to, needs, wants and needs to, uh, add to it or build, you know, improve it, make it bigger, um, so, those additional families, I think, would put a strain on the space of the school, so they'd probably be definitely wanting to, uh, have some sort of, uh, vote on raising a lot of money to, to have to expand the school. The, the school also deals with a lot of staffing issues right now, um, they're, uh, not staffed as they would like to be, so, this would, uh, cause an additional strain on the staffing of the school, which is already stretched to the limit. So those are also my concerns with such a project coming in. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, this is Don Sprague, I live at nine Dollar Fdam Road, and I realize that when we talk about traffic safety, there's nothing that we can do in the town to control that, because one fifty-six is a state highway. So it's only the state that can make any changes with that, but I just want to bring up the fact that we have traffic safety issues where we live in our part of Nottingham, where we use one fifty-six to get down into Raymond to go on to one oh one. There's only a stop sign down there, there is not a traffic light, and we're one fifty-six, state highway, we've got trucks, we have everything else to come down to that, what we're gonna call an intersection, but the stop sign, and the traffic built up. When I first moved up here, traffic really wasn't much of a concern, which was one of the reasons that we chose Nottingham, because it felt like you were living in the woods, and yet you were close enough with ninety-three, ninety-five, and now with one oh one, that you could get places fairly quickly. Uh, but it's a dangerous forest down at the end of one oh one, uh, one fifty-six, because now we're at the intersection with another state highway, old twenty-seven, and it's extremely difficult to get out of that area in certain times. Now, with the Tuckaway down there, there's all sorts of traffic coming in and out of there, there's a little plaza on the right, the traffic's coming out of there, and now with the auto, um, shop that's in there at this point, plus the drugstore, there's an exit now right near one fifty-six, where it intersects with twenty-seven, so that it's very difficult in a lot of times to try to get out with all the increased traffic we have. So basically, you, you have, by the time the, the green light, by Urban Gas Station lets all this traffic through, that sometimes can get backed up all the way to McDonald's, and they're coming at you, and you have to wait for a long time for all of that to clear. And then, when they finally have cleared, or there's a lot of traffic coming the opposite direction, there used to be not anywhere near that much, so now we have to try to work our way out. And then now with the Tuckaway having a lot coming out, and then the Auto Parts store with traffic coming out of there, it makes it extremely difficult, and because of that, we, you have to get aggressive, and in process of getting aggressive, you can get unsafe in things that you're doing. And so my main concern with all of this is the fact that all of us that live on one fifty-six in Nottingham, down into Raymond, we have the Tuckaway State Park, all that traffic coming out of there, which has to go down to that stop sign at the bottom of one fifty-six. And any other traffic that's coming down from the state highway up in four and all the way down, there's a lot of traffic there, and if you get behind, uh, the trucks with the pulling heavy equipment behind them, it's extremely difficult to get out. Now, I saw that the Tuckaway in front of that, that the, um, breakdown lane, they went ahead and put cones up. Uh, I thought that was maybe the police that was making them do that, because to stop people from parking, they had to go into the restaurant, and it was a safety concern. I was down at the police station here earlier this week to speak to someone, because I thought I had an idea that wasn't gonna solve the problem, that maybe would make it a little easier for us when we have to go down to that area all the time. And that was to put cones up into the breakdown lane, all the way past where one fifty-six hits. Um, and I thought, well, at least then we're, we're safe from where if somebody lets us come out and we start to go out and get hit by somebody going full speed down in the breakdown lane, heading toward Urban Gas Station. And I was told by the police officer, he says, yeah, I wish I could do it, but we can't, because state law allows people to go ahead and drive around and use the breakdown lane to go past something like that. And what happens for us now when we're going down there, we don't have any choices, now, a lot of people are cutting down on Ham Road to cut onto twenty-seven and then continue... And the other thing is now there's a street that comes into 156 that's right behind the auto shop that's down there. And you can come in through there, and then you end up cutting through the Walgreen parking lot to try to catch the light at Urban Gas Station if it's really backed up a lot. Well, the problem there is now that's another safety factor, because now you've got people driving through a parking lot, and most accidents happen in parking lots when people are backing up. But now you've got cars going all the way through to try to pick up a light at the Urban Gas Station. So, there's another safety feature there, too. So, I know we don't have the power to do something out of traffic light down there. That's totally up to the state. And the police actually told me in Raymond that, you know, we have a lot of accidents down there, and every time we do, we send a report to the state saying, "We've got a problem area down here. We need to do something about it." Are they going to do anything? I've been here since 98, and I don't see a lot of things taking place, even though with all the traffic's increased. So, my concern is, as a committee, you don't have the power to do something about 156. But with a housing area going in, and if it's 20 buildings that are going in over there, and nowadays, we're, we're families of two cars all the time instead of one. So, that's 40 more cars that are going to, we're going to have to deal with that are coming down to that area that's unsafe really for us. And it's going to create more backup, and it's going to create the potential for more accidents and people to do things, because they're driving more aggressively to try to get out and get out of that area. So, the thing that I think the committee does have the power to do, then in taking into consideration the general safety for people on a situation that the state can only control, is to go ahead and overrule on the project, which then at that point would eliminate all the extra cars added to the situation of going down to an unsafe situation that we have already. And nothing can get done to rectify that until the state would step in and put a traffic light down at the bottom of the hill, which would make things a lot easier at that point. So, that's the only point I want to make here, is you do have the power to make, from preventing a bad situation going worse by stepping in and possibly just approving the project based on a, a safety situation for all of us that have to use these, that area and what we have to do to get around it sometimes.
Right. Thank you. And to one of your points, I, the state does have a 10-year plan. I don't know that-
I just looked. It's not on the current published one.
I'm curious if that was on there.
And the Raymond police know it's a big problem there, and they say, "Hey, we keep sending reports up. We send reports up, and then nothing happens. It's all out of our hands."
It may not be in the DOT's current 10-year plan, but they actually just had a bunch of public meetings. That, I don't remember where I read it. That intersection has come up in some more technical aspects of the DOT. It has gotten worse in the last couple of years.
Oh, yeah. Because of the population we have.
They amend this 10-year plan pretty much every two years. So, it's never actually a 10-year plan. It's a two-year plan that they amend every two years. So, to that point, they have the warrants, they have the trigger, and certainly accidents are one of the warrants, if you have too many accidents.
May I speak, Mr. Chairman? The other thing, and we've spoken with the DOT before, because remember, we were commenting on how crazy busy it is here on 152 and how they're going too fast? And their comment to us at that time was, "There aren't any deaths yet. No one has to die."
Yeah. And that's the way it is in a lot of places, until something is severe like that, that then you make the standard. That's why you do have the power to go ahead and overrule a project, you know, and you can base it on a safety consideration, because that's, like I said, that's another 40 cars going down the road, they're going to hit the backups, and then, like I said, you get aggressive, you have to make mistakes, and next thing you know, you have accidents. And like you said, hopefully it doesn't end in a death, but it's too bad in today's environment that sometimes it takes something that's severe before someone steps up, where maybe we, as a group in Nottingham now, can prevent that from ever happening.
Yeah. I would say my other piece, and it's not germane to this case at all, but just to the comment about the roads, because we had the same group before, and 152, as Mrs. Bascom had mentioned, we had the state park expansion that was proposed. There was a lot of, of public letters to state reps and senators in the departments to take, make some noise and to at least make sure it stays on a radar, if it's not on a 10-year plan now, to try and get it on there. So, we don't control, we usually provide input on the 10-year plan for the area. I'm actually looking at our last letter from the last year. It was the 152, 156 intersection, to change that to a 90-degree, the bridge on 152 over the North River, bridge widening during rehab reconstruction, New Hampshire 156 over the Tuckaway River, were areas of concern. And we've talked about 152, about requesting that they widen that a little bit, because it's a state bike route. It's designated bicycle route, so, but there's no shoulders, so, you know, that might-
Yeah.
So, anyway, so that-
See, at 156, you're talking a lot of 152, but on 156, we don't have a choice. And anybody in Nottingham to listen, if it has to go that way to go south, like I said, there's alternatives, but they're not good to take. But, you know, instead of waiting for the state to make up their mind, it's something that at least right now, we can make a decision by just disapproving the project completely based on that, because all we're doing is we're just increasing the number of cars out there on the road and the backups, how far back up they get and all that. And then, like I say, you try to get out, and next thing you know, somebody's speeding going right around a car in the breakdown lane, and I can't stop that. I tried to see, well, put cones up there, at least we can make that a little bit safer. But the answer came back, and said, "We can't do that." But they said, "All we can do is send the reports to the state." But like you're saying, how many reports are we going to need before somebody steps up to the plate?
You could maybe-
This is only going to make it worse by adding more, at least 40 more cars that are out there on, on the street, heading down in that direction. Because when you live in this part of Nottingham, you don't have a choice. If you want to get to 101, that, that's our option. You know, otherwise, we'll go all the way up to the center of town, 152 or something, and cut over to 125. So, everybody in Nottingham is affected by this. It's not just the butters around a project. So, I'm, I'm setting the project aside. I'm just speaking from a safety standpoint, from all of us who live in Nottingham and those who live in Epping along this way, that we do have a problem. And, you know, it's just a matter of time before it may be our turn to get in the accident.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Appreciate your comment.
Yeah, the only thing I'll say to that, it kind of goes to a couple of what we heard today, is ultimately, when we have an application become, a full application coming for us, we have the subdivision regulations, which are fairly detailed, to review against. And that's, that's essentially, we have to review against those subdivision regulations. There's interpretations within it. But one thing regarding the subdivision that is important is a lot of these items, school, traffic, environment. I know Mr. Felzone is well familiar with it, is, as part of the application, he has to submit essentially an impact statement that covers all those elements. And I guess the only thing I'd say is, I'm sure they've been taking notes that as part of the traffic element, yes, state governs. It's a DOT driveway permit on access, but it might be prudent for the applicant to consider, you know, instead of just doing a trip generation, i- if he wants to consider going a step above to maybe present some of that additional data, because it is unique in that, that intersection is, from a traffic analysis perspective, is actually a pretty good distance away from this point. And when you look at like, a traffic engineering perspective, the further you go away, the less important that intersection becomes from an impact statement in terms of like, like technically ask for somebody to do an impact study. But it's worth mentioning to the applicant that maybe it's worth having a traffic engineer provide feedback on distance from this development, because you, you had a good point. There, there are other avenues, but obviously, the state route is the primary road, and then Hamm Road is, people use it. It's not, you can't, you can't force traffic there.
It's so bad on the end, where they put the sign up, no trucks, because everybody's using 156 and have trucks up it.
Right.
It's about 2.7 miles.
Yeah. And so, all of the, you know-
It's a no off Hamm, so, you know, we're not that, we're not that far off.
Right. And usually, it's the one-mile threshold is usually, until you hit certain levels of permitting, there's, obviously, the radius keeps growing. But I think it's worth mentioning to the applicant that they might want to consider just, you know, not just giving us your estimated trip generation of what that impact is, because it may not, DOT would govern if a full traffic impact study is needed. But I'm sure Mr. Felzone enjoys these to kind of get all that feedback, so it's, we'll kind of throw that out there, that it's worth getting ahead of those questions at the full application level if, if it comes to that, so.
There's also the, also the issue of the passing lane.
Yeah. So, again, that-
And that's what, yeah, DOT will review that and determine if that's something that can remain.
Yeah. So, DOT, and generally, with any, any application that does come before the board, if, if it's approved, and it's on a state route, one of the conditions of approval is obtain all necessary permits from the state, including, you know, an HDOT permit. So, that's a separate process that the applicant goes through as a condition of approval, if, if, you know, approval is granted. So, there are steps between where we're at now and, and that potential.
And there's a lot more information that we will receive as a full application. A lot to give information to go through.
Correct.
Just for an historical point?
Of course, yeah.
The DOT issued a DOT permit, it's in the on file.
Okay.
One of the other developers did.
Okay.
And of course, I think I hear you saying, "Do a traffic study." I'll do a traffic study.
All right. Thank you. Is there any other, any questions, comments? If not, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. It's eight o'clock. And again, if, if and when this comes before us as a, as either another design review or an application, it would be renoticed, and any butter would, would receive a notice that would be, here in application. So, Mr. Felzone, I'll have you come back up. Did you, did you want us to continue the design review again, or are you sufficient? Okay. So, a motion to close the design review for case 23007DR would be in order?
I'll make a motion that we close the design review for case number 23-007DR.
Second.
So, that's a motion by Mr. McKinnon, and a second by Ms. Anderson to close the design review. Any further discussion? All is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? That motion carries 6-0. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Budget season. Oh, boy.
So many of them said exactly what I said.
Well, we were talking about that. We were sitting here with the council about that law. Yep. Thank you.
The realtor's putting it as, you know-
Well, that's, that law, just so you know, John, that law actually had buried surveying. She did a, like, a yield plan layout on it. Yeah, I looked at it.
All right. We'll just jump right into-
When I retire, I had this vision of-
Other, other-
Pre-amp.
Like pre-amp.
All right. Before I go into the items that are other on here, there was a question from, from the Landry's clerk, I believe, about case 22011, S U B, Moore's Road. So, that was conditionally approved. The applicant submitted some items to us for the HOA documents. I think we got the covenants. So, basically, I just wanted to have it during a public meeting, saying that we're going to provide feedback that council has given us. The council's reviewed what's been provided. There's some edits to be made, and then, but within that so far, there was nothing in there about the lake access and parking, which was also a condition of approval, to add detailed language regarding location of lake access. And then, there's no, the bylaws weren't provided to us, so.
Something about road easement, too, or something like that. I didn't know which one.
Well, I think she was just asking if, if there were, was a road easement required or any drainage structures, easements that were required as part of this, and I don't think there were either of those. So, Alana, I guess this is formal. We, you, you can go ahead and reply back to the applicant on this one, the applicant's rep, and let them know, provide the town council's feedback, what the suggested edits. And then, just let them know that those pieces have not been addressed and are conditionally approval still, so. Waiting for more information. It might be good for them to just give us an update on all the items on here to make sure that they're in agreement as to where we think we are, so we don't end up in an example where they think they've submitted everything and we're waiting. Budget season. Yay! This should be our everybody's thing. Basically, it's time to redo the budget again. We can talk about this tonight, or we can hammer it out for, for the 23rd. So, basically, where we are, expenditures and budget, we're a good chunk of the way through. The, the planning board planner one is interesting to me, because that, the SRPC contract is on an annual contract, but June to June or July to July, if you remember. But either way, it's mid-year. It's, it's, so, our, I think the way our budget comes out for that, the way it's paid is, is, is interesting, so.
And we work on the fiscal year, July 1 to June 30.
Right.
That's the government.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, usually, when I check with, with, with SRPC, you know, we're right on track with our allotted hours. So, everybody, I guess we can go right through this, if you guys want to look at it.
Might as well just, just roll through it real quick.
So, planning board salary secretary, I don't, I think if there's a change going to be proposed there, it would probably be brought to us by the select board slash town administrator. So, for now, I would say we don't touch that number if we're, as long as we're in line with cost and expense. Planning board planner, again, that's contractual, we're contractual on it, so that one would stay the same. So, I'm just going to go through all the line items, and we can go back if anybody has one they want to change. Postage, again, that's a reimbursable expense, so that one, we usually just leave where it is. Printing, we just, that's a line item. Dues and conferences, we reduce that down to 500. We try to keep it in there so that we encourage some of these, we've lucked out with some. I think they've been virtual, so they haven't had a cost, where years past they did.
Yeah, it's starting to come back now for more than person.
Publications, I think that's going to be expended soon. I think we just ordered the, the books, so that, that, and it's about the same cost, I think. So, that should be in line. The registry of deeds, that's reimbursable, so we generally, it's, you know, it's been shifted back to the applicant. The advertising, again, that's a reimbursable expense, so I don't think we have any line item changes there. Office supplies, whoa.
Look at all these folders that were put in.
Yeah. So, Alana, I don't know if you have anything on that one. It was budget 300, and we spent 760 so far this year. Any idea if, do we buy something that was new?
I'm in major folders.
You're getting the premium folders?
But aren't folders used for the cases? So, shouldn't that be an expense that gets rolled into what people are charged?
Folders for like applicant folders for applications are like these kind, like binders and-
Right. That's all applicant, applicant stuff.
It's kind of, it's kind of a fee that you would probably account for in the actual application fee.
I don't know. I'll, I'll ask.
I can make a little note on that one.
I've never heard of expensing for like office supplies, but John, I know John brought up at the last select board meeting, is that our fees are a little low, and a lot of times you try and base your fees off of, if you're seeing like, hey, if we're seeing these costs, like, our application fees need to go up, because we need to cover those costs, and those are just-
Yeah. We shouldn't be absorbing that as taxpayers. Why should I be paying for somebody to have hundreds of pages of material printed off and all these folders to be stored for eternity?
Hopefully, we can get an increase in our fees. That will help, but.
You will. Yeah. So, you won't see it in that granularity, but it should be within our total fee for an application.
We're looking for ways to raise money.
It should be-
Really? Whoa, what a surprise.
It should be part of that, so. You might not see it, because, you know, nothing in here, do you see, nothing in here do you see, to my knowledge, a, the reimbursable part of like an application cost? I don't know where those can show up. I don't know if anybody noticed. John, you've been through budget, you know, that ever, how that gets calculated, like all the, the application fees that do come in, those don't go back in? I don't think they, basically, I'm saying, I don't think they go back into planning boards and offsetting expense, except for the, you know, the things that are, butter notifications, recording, those kind of things, those do show up, but.
Those are the like direct reimbursements.
I can't speak for the, every dollar that rolls through and how it gets dispersed or where it goes.
Yeah. Where it gets tagged, yeah.
Betsy would be able to answer how that works.
Oh, planning board equipment. Oh, planning board equipment. Alana, any idea if any big, big things needed in the land use office that were?
No, but our computer kind of stinks, but I was thinking next year maybe.
I'd also be curious too, like how the town handles, is it department by department that they handle equipment, or if it's like through a vendor and they just, every year the town replaces a certain amount of equipment, I don't know.
Okay.
Why, you need a new computer?
And then, some of these items like the, the, I think the planner or the, or the, planner I think is all on the planning board's budget, but the planning board, land use, it's still under salary secretary, which is the wrong title, I think we asked that to be changed prior.
Correct, that's under the other budget.
That should be updated to land use clerk. There's another line item on the zoning budget, that's not our control. For part of that, obviously the bulk of the hours, I believe, are ours, same thing with the planner. So most of it shows on our budget. Mileage reimbursement, that, that's, none of it's been used this year so far, so I think a hundred is fine still. The master plan town map. This is one where we should probably consider adding some dollar amount in.
We talked about, does it, do we put a dollar amount in, or do we do it as a warrant article, or, I mean, in the long run, it'd be great to have it more on like, you don't need more capital reserve funds, but it's the type of thing that's kind of like the assessment, you put a little bit in each year if you know every five, ten years you have to spend the money.
Yeah, and I don't know that we could put in a warrant article for our budget item as a board.
Yes, you have to request the creation of like a reserve account if you were going to do it in that way. But I just, because if we, if we do try and even put five hundred dollars, I guess we'd have to figure out ahead of time, what is the five hundred dollars getting us?
So that one is a big one to consider, I think. Planning board legal, plan and legal services. We have a five hundred dollar budget, we view zero. I'm not certain how, we've stopped quite a few. Sent out a few, number of requests for input from town council this year, more than probably in years past. I don't know how that gets accounted for.
Looks like it's all under the next one.
No, that legal engineering reimbursement, I think. Well, I think those two, you would think.
It could just be, she could just be putting all of it in that.
Yeah, but I think.
Because the, the one we just, who paid for the?
Yeah, like when does that bill get tagged?
Today. Who paid for that?
I think it's all just getting put into one account, because she has no way of knowing, was it solely a PB request, or was it from an applicant?
We haven't charged back anything to an applicant for, for legal review, to my knowledge. So that, that's a, you know what, the engineering we do, and we, because we get a proposal, we can get a bond.
That, that's going to be an issue.
I imagine we're not the only board that has a decent legal fee.
It's, it's how it lines of the paperwork is what makes the, how you read it down.
But this total dollar amount, I think this is for the two cases before us that we sent out for CMA. Yeah, and we got that back, right?
Oh, I see too, because that's not just legal, that's engineering reimbursables.
So I think that dollar amount matches up with, with those two. And the planning board miscellaneous is where we put the SRPC dues. As far as I know, we don't know what, when do those get calculated, Blair, do you know? We joined this year, so that's again, a fiscal, so we're in until next June.
But we need to know if there's going to be an increase or.
So we don't, we won't know what the actual cost is. Historically, I think it's been about this much.
Yeah. Didn't she send it, you would have had a bag of proof on this, and she sent it to you.
Anticipated next.
For next year?
Have you, has, since the.
We joined, because we just joined this year, so.
So has there been no fee?
We, we paid the current fee.
Which would put us in for this full year, but that just started in June or July for the SRPC.
Oh, so when is like the next one?
Wouldn't be calculated till next year.
Because we have to approve this budget prior to this next start of your fiscal year, when that fee is due. I guess Jim would have to look and see what's the average increase so that we can account for whatever percentage increase.
Well, it's by population. It's calculated by population.
So the two thousand and twenty census would have been less.
So ours is increasing much slower than other towns that are, you know, Portsmouth, Stratford, sorry, Dover and Rochester and some of the other towns that are in it, so it's proportionate share. So I would think this dollar amount would probably be sufficient, sufficient. Again, we're pretty close. Again, yeah, so that's just the way our budget season works and, and the town warrant, so everything's got to get approved, but it wouldn't even be.
Yeah, because she starts figuring the budget around the beginning of the calendar year for the.
So we're essentially going to propose to keep the same values, except you're going to ask about office supplies?
Yeah, I mean, anything that's higher than, than what we budgeted for, that's not a reimbursable expense.
And we're not the end of the year.
You know, I'd like to, and, and we're, yeah, we've still got three months left in the year in the budget. To know what that is, just to make sure that we can account for it correctly. And I don't have twenty twenty-two's budget, because I feel like some of these were changed and ended, so.
Went up and down.
So we, I think we, we should probably put this on the agenda for our next meeting as well and try to finalize it that night to get it back to the budget committee. But does anybody have any input tonight for, for this?
I mean, it sounds like we're just saying, let's just keep the same values, but maybe before making a final vote, we want to get clarity on the office supplies to see if that one number.
Yeah.
Is the one that seems like we're.
So line.
Want to clear up the legal thing too.
Figure out if it's being properly charged, yeah.
And I don't even know if you can charge that one back, because it's different than like a engineering review. I definitely think we should ask the question, how do we, how do we account for it and how do we?
This could be also put as, you know, planning board legal term right here, but it goes into the line item that the town has for legal.
Yeah.
That we have to set aside, we spend X amount of year on legal, that could be already processed and this is just how they say, okay, planning board uses as much legal, this use, this department uses as much legal. I, I don't know that exactly how that.
And are, are we saying, so like the HOA reviews, those are getting billed back though to applicants, or we're not sure? So like when they review HOA, okay.
So I think.
I mean, that's clearly something that's applicant related, so.
And I think this goes back to one of the other discussion points we had, is what some towns do is they require, based on what the application is, a bond or an escrow, an escrow upfront of a certain dollar amount. Many towns for like a major subdivision, it's five grand, bigger things it might be ten. But an escrow that's upfront, that gets pulled from, for engineering review, the legal review would then be able to be pulled from that too. We just have to make sure that it gets, when it gets billed back to the town, it, you know, says what it was for. I think that's the path that we should be on. You know, there's some legal questions I think we get, that it's really not the applicant's side, it's the board trying to, you know, figure out our own regulations for clarity, but other times where it really is something that should probably be billed back, billed back specifically, review of HOA documents, covenants, bylaws, things of that nature, which are drawn up by lawyers from the applicant's side. Of course, a lawyer should be the one reviewing it, so we should be making sure that, that the town isn't the one absorbing all that cost. So how do we, how do we do that? That goes back to one of our things from the joint meeting, I think, where we talked about fees.
So that's more of a question to Betsy and procedurally how things are being tracked.
Yeah, so there is a planning board comparison.
Because also, I don't know if like the, if the attorney is sending, when they send their invoice to the town, I don't know how much detail is being put, these two hours are spent on that.
They would have to, we'd have to make sure that.
Yeah, that's not the way it's being done and there's no way for her to track, she's just putting it all in one pool.
So we'd have to make sure that with the town administrator and select board that we make sure that.
Which I'm sure the.
Talk to town council first to make sure.
Town council would do, but, yeah, okay. Okay.
So anybody have further discussion on this or want to make any changes tonight, or otherwise, I think the twenty-third, I'll try to get some information.
Let's just finalize on the twenty-third.
About line two, to make sure there's, if there's any changes proposed from the town administrator on that one. Office supplies, try to figure out if we know why that one bumped up, or if that's actually where it's been historically. I'll ask about the master plan piece. Try to check with SRPC, but I don't think they'll have a number for the, the budget for that.
Are you, do you mean by the twenty-seven, by the next week?
Oh, twenty-seven.
You mean by the twenty-seventh, by next week? Yes, thank you. I'm looking at twenty-three, so, okay. So, so everybody can take a look at that, we can make sure that, we try to get that pushed over after the next meeting.
It's not on the agenda, but because it's the next sheet in here, so John, you already gave the board select one a heads up that they're going to be looking at this?
Yeah, it's still in front of me at the last meeting, but we talked about the fees changing. We talked about impact fees too.
Yeah, I heard that, yeah.
So I don't know if we have to hold a public hearing if we're proposing changes to the fees, do you know, for that? Probably better than to put it out as a public hearing.
Motion to send it to them for consideration.
Probably, yeah.
I don't know if that's going to be a specific notice, like on the agenda for.
Since we don't control the regulation, it's not really, I, yeah.
So basically, we'd had, we've been talking about this for a while, and Ian, thank you so much for pulling it together. He created like a little chart of what our current fees are, how some of the towns around us, what their fees are, and then an area to change ours, propose ours, to have some new fees. So no change to the subdivision, how that's calculated. There would be a change to subdivision with a new road, that'd be in addition. It would be a six hundred dollar application and then less cost per lot than an application that's before us. There's some.
And the reason for that too, is that oftentimes you're going to have more lots when it's a new road, and overall you do get a larger fee, because obviously we've seen there is more work associated with these larger applications.
Design review, increasing by fifty dollars from a hundred dollars to a hundred and fifty. Lot line adjustment, no change there, proposed site plan, three acres or less. Talking about removing that.
Removing the acreage thresholds.
Remove the acreage, okay.
Yep.
So remove, it says remove, but remove the, um.
Basically, it's getting.
So basically, you'd be getting rid of those.
You'd be replaced, yeah, essentially you're replacing them with the next two and basically going to unit or square footage base, which is the only way I've seen, we're the only, I've never seen a designation between acreage for a site plan. I've only seen between residential, commercial, and then you based on units or square footage.
Yeah. So it'd be removing what we have now, which is the site plan, three acres or less, and site plan, three plus acres, and changing it to site plan residential, which would be a flat fee plus a cost per unit with a max cost, and site plan commercial, which would be a fee plus a cost per thousand gross square feet.
Right, yes.
And again, that would also have, that would not have a max cost.
Correct.
Can you clarify what the difference between site plan residential is and site plan commercial?
So site plan residential would be like a multifamily apartment building, that still qualifies as a site plan, but it's unit-based?
So it's for residential, but it's really a commercial property?
Correct, so yeah, anything commercially has to file a site plan in that sense, but it's still has a residential component, so if we had a multifamily project come before us, they'd pay on, you know, they had ten units in a building. We review the site plan for parking and all that kind of stuff, but their fee is based off the number of units in the building.
I guess part of me is thinking and looking at all of this is, keep the, keep the amount per lot the same, whether it's a subdivision, subdivision of road, site plan residential.
Oh, I see on that, yeah.
I mean, if we're gonna, we're needing to get revenue, generate more revenue, um, I think we should look at kind of going with it across the board, two hundred bucks per.
Yeah, either two hundred, meet in the middle at one fifty, but I mean, it's, in the end, the cost of doing business in these days, and that's not getting cheaper for the town.
Keeps it simple if you're, go.
So the application would be more expensive, but, and then the, the application base plus, it'd be, you're saying proposing six hundred plus two hundred per lot, keeping the per lot cost the same?
Yeah.
But the, obviously higher, because the subdivision with a new road, there's going to be a lot more review, even from you know, our, our planner side of it, before the board sees it, before we would then potentially send it out to engineering.
And if you figure, I mean, so where, where is it? You've got, I'm going to see some design review, a hundred and fifty bucks for a design review. So that's a design review, a hundred, they pay a hundred and fifty bucks, they can come to us for three meetings. That's pretty damn good.
Return on investment?
For them, you know.
So what do you want, three hundred, four hundred?
Well, I mean, I think we, you know.
Most I've, most I've seen is two fifty, but.
We don't do this that often, and you know, I don't know when the other towns have or have not updated theirs.
If you want to build in Nottingham, it's going to cost you money.
Right, I mean, we keep hearing. We, we, we've talked about a moratorium, I mean.
And they're all asking for it tonight, essentially.
You keep a tax rate as low as we do, we're enticing builders to come to our town.
You do have town.
We're just, we're just, I mean, it's just, that's just part of it.
So are you, for the purpose of the number, are you thinking just double what we currently have, go up to two hundred on that?
The select board will probably go with whatever we, this board here is going to recommend. So if you want to take that design review and say, instead of one fifty, you want to say a design review is three hundred or four hundred dollars, I don't think you're going to get a kickback from the board, now I'm not speaking for the board, but I'll be pitching this in front of the board from our conversation, if they're not watching, anybody not watching tonight. And you know, if the new subdivision, you're talking about a subdivision coming in with, the fee is six hundred bucks and it's a hundred dollars per lot, right? So it's.
Twenty-six hundred dollars for that, yeah.
Twenty-six hundred dollars for a guy that's going to make a million dollars? It, it's, it's not even.
Basically forty-six hundred if we go with the increase to two hundred, yeah.
Jacket.
Right, so, so again, it's just more about trying to cover some of our costs, which.
Yeah.
Because we don't even know these fees when we look at Dover, Durham, Epping, Northwood, I mean, they could be all changing theirs the next year. We might be just being, we might be just playing catch up right now and then watch as inflation, everything goes up. We might be a year from now, we might be the lone man on the totem pole again.
It's also important to note that like a Rochester, well, even Rochester, Epping, Durham, Dover, Dover and Rochester have full-time planning departments. Epping and Durham both have full-time planners, so like they, and so like they already have more tax dollars that for years have been going to those positions. So they don't use these fees to like say completely supplement what that salary is. We don't have the luxury though, like we're, we're contracting out the, our, the planning board, the land use clerk is not getting, that job's not getting any easier as these applications come in, so.
Yeah, it's not going to be easier anyway, because every year we add more to our, our zoning, every year we're adding more to this, so every application becomes harder and becomes even more intense, so that should all be reflected into the fees that we were posting, so.
The flip side with the design review is that we're not sending it out for engineering, we're not, you know, there's less time for even our planner to, to review it, because it's, um, it's not a full application, so.
And I say this too, is that we look at these fees here, and again, this is stuff that I've thought about. If somebody says we're putting a burden on the, the landowner, most of these situations that we've come out front, on Mr. Falzone.
They're not putting money, yeah.
It, it's not, the land, the guy who owned the land that sold to him has no burden, the resident has no burden. It's the developer we're putting the burden on. So whatever we want to put these fees to, it, you are not affecting the individual Nottingham homeowner. You know, and if it is, well, great, that's, that's a one percent of the, of the, I mean, the slightest thing.
The only time when it's the homeowner is a lot line adjustment or something like that, you know.
I mean, the flip side would be that the argument to that would be, well, you're, you're, you're increasing the cost of housing, because it's going to get passed on ultimately.
Well, that's going to get passed.
But again, these are, so I think, I think what we're trying to hammer out and is, you know, what, what can we do to balance it?
I just think we should look a little bit more and I think we should go a little bit higher.
Yeah.
I'm not saying go crazy, but again, we don't know when Dover last did it, or, and I appreciate you doing this, Ian, but we don't know when they. but we don't know when they last updated it, they might be having.
I pulled those from last year, so I pulled whatever the current was.
Whatever their current was.
They probably do amend every year, is my guess.
Yeah, so I think, obviously, so we can, I think what we should do is, we should talk about a little bit more tonight. We'll put this on the agenda, I don't know what the agenda looks like for the twenty-seventh, uh, I know we've got a couple of cases continued that night, um.
So to be clear, what, what's?
So I think we go.
We're sitting here presently right now.
I think maybe that subdivision with new road, we go to two hundred dollars per lot, instead of what I'm showing is a hundred. We go to two hundred dollars per unit on the site plan residential. And, design review, um, I don't think I'd wanna go over three hundred, cause I do wanna keep in mind that sometimes people do come to design reviews if they're trying to do something on their own property, and it's not always a developer, but I do wanna be higher than the hundred we are now.
Yeah.
So, I would say two fifty to three hundred for that, for design review, cause we don't not, we don't get a ton of them, we don't get a lot of them. But we could go higher than a hundred and fifty.
Yeah, I think three hundred is fair.
And I'll, I'm gonna mark these up, and I'll, I'll amend the street, so it's, it's updated.
So anyway, and then, so again, when we start with subdivision with the road, you were talking six hundred and two hundred?
Yep, six hundred, still, and then.
But we could make that eight hundred and two hundred.
Could do it, yeah, we could do whatever.
Again, I'm not, I mean, when you think about what we're saying, the, we look at this, say, wow, it's two hundred dollars more. It ain't two, it's a drop, it's not even, we're talking nothing. And I gotta, you know, and.
Yeah.
No one can come to us and say, hey, our fees are too high, you guys gotta redo it, cause I'm wanting to get a, a thirty lot subdivision. They're gonna say, you, you're gonna, you're gonna come complain about us being a hundred dollars higher than the next town, that's.
When you're making a hundred grand a, a lot, yeah.
You know, it's. So again, if you wanna sit there and you wanna look at this, you wanna go over.
Well, I also think too, I mean, we're already, I mean, a lot of these are gonna represent some sizable increases to what we already charge. And I think, again, because this process, we could find next year that like, oh yeah, we should've done eight hundred. The board of selection at any time can vote to increase the fees, that's the beauty, there's no public hearing component.
If you tell me this right now, we'll, we'll put it on our agenda for next meeting, and you give us these numbers, and we'll.
I'm fine with the six hundred, I don't know if anybody else, again, is feeling, feeling like an increase?
Yeah, again, well, the way I look at it, subdivision new roads generally gonna get sent out with third-party review, and that gets billed back to the applicant separately from, um.
You're just trying to get a larger fee, assuming that that application is gonna require more office time, we're trying to get more reimbursement from that, I suppose.
Yep, it's gonna require a lot more of Alana's time, which is documentation, getting everything out to us, getting.
Emails, the emails go off the chain.
Applicant, keeping track of it, even after approval, you know, six months a year later, making sure, tracking everything down. That's, uh, Alana's been doing an amazing job with that, and, uh, cause a lot of stuff kinda fell through prior, in between, and it was, um, trying to keep track of what's out there, what do we have, what do we not have, it, it's a lot, so that, I can see that taking up quite a bit of, um, office time, so. So, only adjustment, a hundred and fifty, so, again, that's usually pretty minor, so that's, there's no change proposed there. We would be removing those two site plan, the acreage threshold, and instead changing it to the usage residential or commercial.
And just for the commercial, when I did that little example down below, so you guys can see like, what, for a ten thousand square foot building, what our fee would be currently, and it's cheap. Like, in, in terms of like, uh, we do it, our current site plan commercial is a hundred dollars, and then you add, um, one per shoot, for, one per hundred, so it'd be three hundred dollars to do a ten thousand square foot building, if I'm reading that correct, so, that's one where certainly I think we should at least be in line with Durham and Epping. We don't get a lot of commercial site plans, um, but, uh, they see a lot more, so. Dover and Rochester are al- always a lot higher, because they see so much of it, and they do fund, I think, a lot of their planning department with all the commercial applications. And I've seen some of those checks, and they are scary how big those application fees are.
So, on the site plan residential, if we change the sub, you know, keep that two hundred plus two hundred per unit?
Yep.
And then, site plan commercial, three hundred plus fifty dollars per thousand square feet, uh, so your example on that, instead of being.
Matching Epping?
Ten thousand, instead of being two hundred or three hundred dollars, it would be a hundred dollars for the application on that one.
What about the notes? Double the fee on scenic road.
Oh yeah, where do we apply that?
You've got the footnotes, you've got, like, you see where the one is.
We lost the two.
I'm not seeing where the two is, I see the three and the four.
The two is under public notice newspaper?
Oh, public notice, yeah, so we charge double if it's for public notice, if it's a scenic road.
It, it shows all the way over.
Bottom left, yeah, interesting. But I'm proposing this, keep our same noticing fees, uh, we're actually higher than some places. And then, the reason you see like a Dover, Epping, and Rochester, they don't charge it? Because it's written in the application that the applicant is assuming, or accepting that the ta- the city will bill you exactly for what that amount was, they don't charge you more, they don't charge you less, they bill you directly, um, after the fact.
Do you know what the cost is right now, Alana, when we do our public notices in the newspaper?
Seventy-five dollars.
That, I, I mean, well, we actually charged, yeah, cause I know some of that changed, and we changed it once. Kind of account for the, I think in Obit, it's like two hundred and fifty bucks now, to, never mind a, a public notice, so.
Yeah. Um, so, so the only one I did wanna fill in, is, and I think we've discussed this in the past, is we do not have a permit fee for a conditional use application, a permit, so. Again, that is a, when you have an application for conditional use come forward, it is more time for processing, we need to look at it. I don't, for the sake of keeping numbers the same, do you just do three hundred per for that?
Just like you're doing design review, and try and keep as many numbers the same. I was thinking just a hundred, just cause, you know.
It's usually, it's more like a waiver, really, is what.
Yeah, and you end up usually getting, you, like, open space, you have to get a conditional use permit for open space, conditional use permit for, you know, if they think, uh, wetland buffer, um.
Yeah, there's not really a lot to go off of, I'm, I'm not sure, I'm surprised, somebody sounds skilled.
I think adding a fee is good.
Yeah.
Uh, cause it is an application, and, and if they, basically, it's, the conditional use is also preventing the cost of, uh, going to the ZBA was, was the alternative, if it wasn't a conditional use, it'd be a variance, or a special exception, which is a, uh.
Expensive avenue.
Be more expensive avenue for an applicant, cause then it's public notice, it's application fee, and all that again, um. So.
I'd say a hundred or two hundred, cause we've used two hundred a lot.
Yep. Anybody have suggestions on that one?
I'm fine with a hundred, I'm fine with two hundred too.
Yeah, I think, go, go higher than, we don't have to change it for a while.
No, John's thinking two hundred. For the sake of this, we'll just do two hundred, because.
Well, I've been sitting here for a while on this board, and I forgot the last time we did this.
Fees haven't changed since I've been here, I've been here for three years.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, so.
Yeah.
Are, are we gonna take our time every year and go through this, or we?
No, this is like, we're doing.
We'll do it in three years, so if it is.
That's why I said.
Ideally, I mean, ideally, we should be, ideally, I think it's good for us to look at this annually, um.
But go, but to go through it this in depth, I think this is a, a once in a.
The moon.
Okay, so I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna edit this.
And then, the only other thing, we probably would do a public hearing on, would be to make sure that we, um, I still think it'd be good, and maybe it's in our subdivision site plan regulations that we have to update, not here, is the mention about the, um, the escrow. I think it's good to get that money upfront, cause with, the couple that we did, we sent out the request to engineering to start the process. Well, guess who eats that cost of, you know?
If they walk away, yeah.
If the applicant walked away, the town requests it.
We don't, we don't usually make them sound like they're not really much of a binding contract there.
I mean, I guess, it's very unlikely to happen, but it's not a good practice, it's better to have money on hand to pay for it than.
Before anything moves forward.
The first step there in terms of, the, the town has to have a process for setting up the escrow, which then obviously falls to, Alana receives the check, but then somebody on the business side of the town actually has to like, posit it and have, so there is an escrow, there's an escrow, like, usually your bank, you basically add and create escrow counters needed, so. That would probably be one of the TA slash bookkeeper needs to chime in on, of how we, if they're familiar with it, and if not, I'm sure we can, SRPC, or there's plenty of surrounding towns that do it.
So, Alana, for the next meeting, we'll keep the budget on the agenda, and we'll keep, uh, we'll put the, um, planning board fees discussion on the agenda as well, and we'll make a vote on that one, just in this luck board after that. Uh, impact fees, I don't think we're doing anything on that one tonight, oh, I'm gonna put a pause right here. Looking at the minutes from, that, that we have to, to discuss tonight, we had a site plan, we had a site plan continued to tonight's meeting. It was twenty-three dash zero zero eight dash SIT Clark, uh, fifty-eight McCulloughs Road, they've requested that we continue the meeting to tonight. I don't think, we haven't received any requests from them to specifically request, to continue to withdraw.
Haven't heard from them, yeah.
They were going to withdraw, because they weren't sure what was going on, I suggested maybe, maybe just continue it for a month or two, um, but then they just, they never, I didn't follow up, see what they wanted to do, and they didn't contact me. And I kinda did forget, I loved it, so.
This is the guy that wants to park his trucks and stuff and just.
Yeah.
Without having a house and having this.
I think we wanna withdraw the application anyway.
But, I guess.
We have to make a decision.
Let's get a, a request to withdraw before we.
Yeah, and, and because we missed it on the agenda, what I recommend for us to do tonight on this one, just cause it wasn't on the agenda, but it, we had continued to tonight, was that we continue to a dating time certain tonight. We have some correspondence, go out to see what their intention is, and to let them know that, you know, they need to tell us their direction for the next, the next time they're on the agenda, so we can make, you know, we could, we can take final action on this at any time, whether they're here or not.
I'll make a motion.
Please.
I'll make a motion that we continue case number twenty-three dash zero zero eight SIT Clark fifty-five McCulloughs Road to the September twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three meeting, seven P M.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McKinnon, a second by Mrs. Baskin, to continue the, uh, case twenty-three zero zero eight SIT.
Yep, that's the number.
To September twenty-seventh?
Yes.
At seven P M, uh, any further discussion? All's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All's opposed, that motion carries six zero.
If we don't hear anything from them between now and that case, we can make a decision on that night about the case.
Right.
That's what we're gonna, that's how we're gonna handle it, right?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay.
I'm just sitting on that.
Okay, thank you, sorry, everybody, jumped out of order, it's the, made a note to myself, and then, missed it in my writing. Zoning statistics, uh.
I gotta look through those, yeah.
They're in, Alana, thank you so much for compiling this, Dale also, uh, sent us all this information, I think Alana compiled it from there. So basically, this is for five years back, um, what the zoning application, when it was received, the meeting date, the case number, um, what they were requesting relief from, and approved or denied. So some of this, I think we addressed as a board, a lot of it in the past was the, uh, no frontage on private roads, or, or on a classified road, and, town meeting took care of a, a good chunk of those, so.
Only two denials in the last five years.
Yeah.
Yep.
See, the only problem I have with this, again, we're talking about this in general, is that I feel like the applicants that are coming in front of it, cause I, I know a lot of these applications that are here, you know, if I know the houses, I know quite a bit, and it's not like, you know, I can see an applicant going in front of the zoning board and saying, hey, listen, I'm doing my house here, and I need eighteen feet on this one side instead of the twenty for the setback, that's it. But not going in front of the zoning board and saying, I need a variance from my height, I need a variance on the left side, I need a variance on the right side, I need a variance here, and they're going in front, cause they aren't even paying attention to what even our, our regulations are. They're just asking to throw it all out, and that's for a variance on everything. So.
Well, and we met last night and went over these, and thirty-three cases are related to setbacks. And what we talked about was, is, what is the whole purpose of the, it's basically the twenty-foot setbacks on the non-conforming lots, that's the issue. What is the purpose of the setbacks? Does it make sense to have it twenty when the state is ten? Is it, is that extra ten feet absolutely necessary? What is the, you know, do we need to change it? And, um, we actually talked for quite a while last night, and went back and forth, and are recommending that we reduce it to fifteen feet for all side and rear, um, both for.
Fifteen for structures, or that would also apply for septics as well?
For a state, the septic is ten.
Exactly.
The town runs ours as twenty, but states, if you're redoing a septic, it's a whole different criteria than if you're building, putting a new septic in.
Yeah.
We're looking though to keep a fifty-foot, um, frontage for dwellings on the stand, on standard lots.
So the reduc-, you're, you were considering, or considering, uh, like, a fifteen-foot reduction inside and rear, and that would just apply to RA's, basically just town-wide RA zone, worth twenty currently?
This is, you know, like, I mean, I don't disagree with making setbacks on the smaller lots to fifty. I know a lot of people might affect, because people want their privacy, but that's, you know, hey, that's what.
If you run a small lot, you're not really getting privacy.
You're really not, you know what you're doing, but you know, it's, when, if we change, this is where it comes. If you change the fifteen, are we now holding the fifteen?
Right.
Right.
There's no sense changing, yeah, that's where it is.
Exactly, exactly.
There used to be a guy on the zoning when I was on it, eighteen years ago, his name was Earl Rourke, lived, uh, you know.
I remember him.
We used to call him Earl of No, he'd say no to everything on the zoning board. And, literally, that's why, he was an old judge, and he would literally say, if it, read it black and white, and if it didn't go, he'd just tell you no right there and send you on your way. Um, but I understand hardships and the criterias, and I know the whole thing that's in there, but I just think that that's my only reluctance of going from fif- ten to fifteen, from twenty, excuse me, to fifteen, is are we still going to be in the same situation?
Yeah, well, and the other thing, especially for the non-conforming lots on the lake, is, they're tiny lots already, um, and if, like, if I was living on the lake, and I had the buffers, and then someone came in new, and they wanted to expand it, and I've been living here and I've had this buffer, and then now all of a sudden the new neighbor wants to expand their house, I'm gonna wanna have a say in it, right? They're gonna have to go to the zoning board, I'm gonna wanna be able to speak to it. If it's just fifteen, or if it's just whatever, then I've just lost all that say.
I was gonna say too, is that part of it as well, is that, um, by forcing the need for a variance, the applicant is then forced to do that additional engineering survey, which the board, although you might be reviewing a request for a variance, you know, and Dale can know, that's a surveyed lot, they're putting the building here.
Yeah.
If it's fifteen feet, usually then at the discretion of like, well, they can be like, oh, well, I've located my line, and I'm gonna pace off here, and it's, it's not as, sometimes as well-engineered, and I'm forced to do an engineered plan at times, or as an engineered plan. So, yeah, you might not get as much, kinda force the burden on them to prove, this is exactly where I'm gonna be, I will meet that setback.
When I put my septic on my old lot, I had one of these small tiny lots, and I literally had to get a full survey done, on top of the cost of putting my new septic on top of all this, to show you exactly where my property line is, where everything was. It was an incurred cost, I had to come up and, you know, pay land rent to do it, but I couldn't go and, and ask for, you know, my neighbor and ask for his, you know, we had to have it all documented, so.
There's no wiggle room on small lots.
And a number, a good number of these are for septic setbacks, but to your point, septic, septic setbacks in general is the vast majority.
Yeah. Right, septic in general, and as far as the neighbors go, you'd be surprised, Charlene, how many are like, I don't care, it's fine. The vast majority of them don't care, which, and I'm, I'm always going, you may not always be the neighbor, there may be, but then whoever comes in next knows what they're getting when they buy it.
But I thought we changed the side setbacks a few years ago.
We did.
So again, I think, I think.
I thought it went from twenty-five to twenty.
Yeah, I think when we look at this, we understand, you know, we're looking at it holistically, and that the town, you've got best practices, and, you know, kind of what the ideal is for the town, and that's what we currently have for zoning, so that's why we have, this is what we want for everything new, is what things should conform to, but, there's a lot of stuff that was done pre-zoning, that's substandard, subsize, so, you try to add in that balance there for the, for those lots to account for, while they're pre-existing, they're there. Uh, they wouldn't exist under today's standards, but they're already existing, there's already houses there, um. Uh, they wouldn't exist under today's standards, but they're already existing. There's already houses there, um, and whatnot. So how do you provide for that relief and make it, you know, where it's not getting everything to zoning?
We can say whatever we want and change the things that are on there.
Yep.
The zoning board is elected. The people on the zoning board are the ones making the decision. No matter what we change in our, in our ordinances, those members who change over the years, because it's never the same, it's always, always moving, just like every other board, those are the people that are gonna have to sit there and decide whether you get a board that's really heavy conservative. We might have one in two or three years that says no to everything, but then you get a, a board that's very liberal and that says, sure, and they approve everything. I mean, it's just a matter of, you don't know.
One of the big concerns was that the setbacks, especially on your two-acre or greater lots with the fifty feet around, essentially takes out at least an acre to an acre and a quarter away from usable space for the landowner.
For the primary structure, yeah.
Correct. So that's what they're, that's one of the things that they're saying is that, um, and that was why they looked, why we all looked at having it be fifty feet across the board to allow a homeowner a greater use of their land because they felt it was more like land grabbing to make so much of their, um, land not usable for accessory dwelling units or, or primary structures.
But couldn't, couldn't you say by keeping that stuff away, it's preserving the rural character?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say.
Keeping the trees, keeping the buffer, keeping everything from the property lines makes it, gives you that more of a rural. I mean, I'm not, again, I, I'm, I'm just playing devil's advocate. I'm just throwing.
Well, they were still looking at having the frontage be the fifty feet so that you're not having all of these houses right on the road.
Could you.
But allowing them to be able to, like, if I've got this boulder over here and I don't really, because we've had some with wanting to put in a garage, but it's this huge monstrous boulder. I'd really not, rather not be doing any, um, drilling and blasting to get, to build my structure here, so I'd like to put it over there type thing and, and having that freedom. But you, don't talk to me about rural character when we've got all of these cul-de-sacs coming in where there's no tree line and it's just house upon house upon house.
Yeah.
Please.
I'm with you. But no, so that, I mean, again.
Rural character has gotten way out of the door.
Got way.
Development. So that's just my opinion.
You gotta go north of that.
Pardon?
You gotta go north to really get into some of that.
Yeah, but I, I agree with you. I, I like seeing trees between, I like having trees between my neighbor's house and my house and stuff. But I, I think that it's, it's not so much the bigger lots that we're talking about anyway. It's the.
If you're putting, your question, if you're putting, this surprises me, if you're putting a shed that's less than twelve by twelve, you don't have to put it fifty feet from your property line.
Well, we have, it's twenty, it's twenty feet for an accessory building. So no matter what size the shed is, as long as it's the accessory.
That's what opens up a lot of that space, that fifty-foot setback from the main dwelling, like those people.
Right, so like, if you wanted to do a garage, you, it would be considered accessory if it's detached? Not? That's the issue too. A lot of people want like attached garages and that means it's part of the primary structure. Unless there's building code things, you could do a, a covered entryway and not have it be.
Twelve by twelve or under, you do not need a permit for. So you could technically put it anywhere you want on your line if your neighbor doesn't say anything because the town's never gonna know about your twelve by twelve shed anyways.
I think when you read, I think, even the undersized stuff.
I think we're going too far on this.
I think, I think the building permit is, is, you're supposed to get a permit.
What was the idea of doing this? I, I, you know, I could give the joint meeting, but what was the idea?
To give us an idea of.
Dale.
So it was to give us an idea of what we did in the past on, on, given us direction of, um, looking at one or of the zoning changes was, well, what's going to zoning all the time? And is it unnecessary? Is it just, is it just red tape? Is it just an extra cost? Is it just a fee basically because it's getting approved? So we did that with, um, oh shoot, blanking, well, one of the big changes was a number of years ago. Um, there was something that was always going before zoning.
Right.
And we were able to, to free it up and.
It's frontage.
Yeah. But the frontage was, was something we couldn't, we couldn't free up because it was a private road issue. There wasn't a classified road and the guidance from legal was not to, not, not to change that.
Well, I think you see, there's not a lot of them, but the septic setback one is actually a really easy one to go after because to your point, we are stricter than a state. Like the state would give somebody a septic design, no problem within ten feet, but then you've got a harder time at the town. Not meaning the town can't be more restrictive, but.
Right, right. And we're just wondering.
That's an easier one.
What is the reason for us being more restrictive? And that, that is something that I didn't have an answer for. I don't know why we're more restrictive.
Especially with the state's the one that ultimately, you can't even build those systems without the state looking at it and they're the ones that create the, the rules.
Right.
Around septic, so.
Yeah, I think, I think.
That's an easy, that's an easy one. If you wanted to go after an update, that's an easy one. Just again, I always, I'm always in favor of being in line with the state where it makes sense.
Was reduced from, I think it was fifty feet at one point.
Yeah.
It was reduced down to the twenty. Maybe that was the one that we had done. And there was quite a bit of discussion at that time, you know, list of twenty feet less, you know, just by state standard. But I think the thought was.
It was twenty at one time.
If they're two-acre lots and you have the room to have it a little bit more on the conservative side of, of having a slightly lot more setback to, to, you know, keep it away from the budding property lines.
That's where it plays into this whole discussion about what do you do for side setbacks, stuff like that. Because currently where it's fifty, 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 the primary structure has to be further away from the line. You're not gonna build your se-, you don't want to build your septic further from the house than you have to because that's more expensive to build.
Twenty for the se-, septic's are twenty.
Right, but that's where, that's probably why the idea was, well, if you do twenty, it's still, you know, somebody could put it in the setback, but the house still needs to be so far away.
Right.
But I think ones with the septic setback, I imagine those septic setback ones, if I looked at all the addresses, are gonna be lake lots that needed septic setbacks.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I mean, it's not a lot of cases that.
It's not a lot, but if we were looking for, if we don't have anything to do, that's an easy one to go after.
But.
But the, the septic setbacks on here, I mean, I think they're all lake lots, so they're all small price pre-existing non-conforming lots. They're not, we're not talking two-acre lots. We're talking non-conforming lots, of record.
Correct.
I mean, my, my point is, is there's, the zoning board's not seeing a lot of cases per year if this is all of the cases. I mean, so it's not a lot of variances that are being asked for.
Six, I think total.
But the, the reason it was brought up was because uh, Dale mentioned that the majority of the cases coming before us are for setbacks and we're approving them, saying that they meet the hardship criteria. And that's basically, you know, a large, large part of what we look at when they're presenting their case. Yeah, obviously, do they change the rural character of the community? Is it going to decrease somebody else's home value and stuff? That's taken into consideration. Most of the time it's an improvement because they're taking down a rundown place and putting in something nicer. So that point becomes the hardship. And do they need the six feet on one side and eight feet on another side?
And most of these have fire on the lake.
Mm-hmm, yeah, I know.
You know, so where we, we have allowed for camps to be converted into year-round homes and year-round homes to be expanded. So that's what the, what, that's what the zoning board's there for. That's what variances are, are there for.
But what we're saying is, where we're approving so many of them, does it make sense to keep the twenty-foot setback? Or should we be changing it?
They're thoroughly looking at a dozen, a dozen a year. It's not a lot.
You know, the nice thing too is when you see these, all these from the, the lake, you know, that are going forward, as you know, I've been there for my whole life. There, this number is gonna get smaller every year because there just isn't any more lots that are available. And those houses that were camps aren't there anymore anyways. So you're really going.
They're going to the next phase of McMansion.
Right, but that, that's.
So like going to that.
That, that's.
Six million dollar, Winnebago Saki-sized homes.
It's, well, you gotta have more lots for those because.
They're big.
I think everybody should take a look at this. Get, look at like where, what street it was, what the relief was requested. But to Mr. Morton's, you know, earlier point, not, probably not the point he meant, but I'm gonna use it for, is I don't wanna be making changes to the zoning ordinance based on the, what the current makeup of the zoning board is. You know, so like you said, if we keep reacting and just changing it, then we make it less restrictive, but then the next zoning board's denying everything, so then we have to make it more restrictive. And, um, I think it's a balance in, you know, do we try to figure out a way to, to do something with the lake lots? Because those are kind of unique. But what, what's the answer? You know, and, and what, what, and again, and where do you cut, because again, if, if we're saying, if we're saying twenty feet and they're, you know, well, it's just nineteen, well, if a foot doesn't matter, then a foot doesn't matter. Then why do we have any setback? If, you know, where do we draw the line of what foot, when does the foot start to matter? Is it five feet?
Depends on the person interpreting it and that seems to be on the zoning board.
Right.
Well, and, and in truth, we do look at, you do need a setback of some sort because I don't want my neighbor's garage being right on the line and if he needs to do some repairs, he needs to be on my property.
Right.
To make those repairs. So we see, we agree that a setback is something that needs to be there.
Yeah.
But, and the other, the other thing though, Ed, is in, if we are gonna make any changes, we as a planning board to this, then we do have some dates coming up where we would need to have something ready for public hearings and.
I was just, I was just gonna transition to that. It's because I, we had the calendar shared with us. What, do we know, what's the Oc-, I'm just curious, because I was looking at our October dates. What's the October date for the ZBA? Calendar-wise, like where does that fall? We have a meeting on, planning board meets on October eleventh.
Zoning for October the seventeenth, seventeenth.
So I was gonna propose that we at least make a note that an agenda item on October eleventh should be to try and hone in on. We usually try and choose three, four things that we wanna maybe pursue and then by this November date, November descent, well, so November thirteenth, first day to accept petitions.
Ours are January.
Right, so we're, so usually October, but we always find that. Yeah, and I mean, even the applications we have before us right now.
Yeah.
It's gonna keep us busy through the next month or two, so.
Yeah, and I thought we, we had a list of in.
We do.
Oh, well, except for just town roads.
What we wanted to work on.
There's no worries.
Well, I'm thinking like in terms of like locking up. Next meeting's already pretty busy.
So, yeah, I, I agree. So by the, the October agenda, first meeting in October, we should have an agenda item to, with any zoning warrant articles that we're thinking about doing. So have a discussion there and I'll make sure that, I'll go back through our list, see what we've looked at and we can have a vote that night as to what we wanna move on, move forward with, if any.
Because that gives us time even if we wait, we say we need another month to look at one or two of them to see if it's really something we wanna pursue.
And we had brought up that night the issue of what is an animal for the Aquifer District. And there's a couple of us that are going to get together. Bonnie's one of them, Terry Bonds is helping and myself. Um, we'll put something together and bring it forward to you guys to see what you think as far as that goes for the five animals that's allowed in the Aquifer District.
I think that should be a density change. Since we're here discussing all this stuff, I'm just gonna bring this up while it's fresh on my top. Is everything in Nottingham is, is, every category, let's say, if you go look around, is residential and agriculture is, is one, right? We don't have just residential. Now, if you're on a lot that's not two acres or, or more, I don't think you should have an agricultural, uh, tag on your lot. It should just be residential. Because one of the reasons, we, we, when I was at their meeting, what they were talking about, the neighbors was the lot they were looking at was not a two-acre lot.
And they want livestock and stuff.
And they wanted to put, right, but it wasn't a two-acre, so it was a smaller lot and they were bringing potentially big animals onto it.
Well, they had three pigs and twenty-something chickens. They had already had a chicken coop prior when they bought the place, so they knew they could have chickens.
But we, but that's why I'm just saying though, is that, you know, if you were, I could just imagine, you know, on some of these lots you're around that, that are seventy-five by seventy-five, if a guy puts a chicken coop and he has twenty chickens running around, they're gonna be running in my yard or this unless he's got them always fenced in, you know, there's not gonna be free range. And, and then, you know, great, I have a point seven-five lot that's seventy-five by a hundred, but I wanna have two pigs out back.
Because we do.
You know, and that's, I mean, right on top of your neighbors, the smell, the, I mean, there's a way we could change that. Saying you can, you're, you classify, I mean, we're classifying areas in town as residential agriculture, not lots.
Yeah, and you see this in other towns. I know Rochester had this issue because it, you know, a lot of areas were deemed agricultural. But then you had these, you know, very small lots because they had public water, public sewer. But people wanted to have bagged their chickens. Was a big, big thing. So, you know, I think with certain districts, if you're gonna restrict the number of animals, I think it's more of a density thing. Because again, I think.
That's exactly what it is.
Was if it's, uh, you're, you have a hundred acres, they happen to be a non-protection district and you wanna have ten animals.
Look who we tell that.
The densi-, you know, it's a lot different than a half-acre non-conforming lot wanting five.
But you, you see, but so it's what I'm saying.
Just because of loading.
Yeah. Where the point is, you know, what I'm saying is that.
If we're gonna start getting into threshold and stuff, there is a lot of examples, both in Maine and New Hampshire on communities that have kind of created a table to say, almost, almost lot-based saying, you know, there's certain thresholds you can't go above until you hit certain acreage. And that is, it goes to the, trying to reduce impact too. So right now, somebody, in theory, could buy a brand-new subdivision lot, put up a big house and raise, have their mo-, their lawn mowed by sheep, I guess, but, um, yeah.
So lot size determines, you know, agriculture, I mean, don't come to Nottingham and buy on a subdivision that has a one-acre lot and say, I wanna become the farmer on my one-acre cul-de-sac lot. That's not the, other people in the lot are like, wait a second. I like going by the farm that sits on top of the hill with the hundred acres with it, you know? That's, that's the farm, not where, not my road.
So I think there's three things, or multiple things to this. One, at first glance, it seems like an easy fix, which they rarely are. Two is, there's been one case of this in five years of documented zoning requests. So doesn't mean we shouldn't fix it. Do we do it now or do we do it as a bigger dive and look at, okay, instead of just changing some language here, is it? Or do you see, is it changing?
These changes fall under when we do the master plan?
There'd be.
The master plan would, would only come out and say that, you know, identify areas that we should look at, but it'd still have to come back to us. It's, it'd be like that long list we had for ten years of immediate, short-term, long-term, ongoing.
Ed, we did recognize it was only one case, but the issue, um, really remained that it was something that struck us as animal wasn't really defined. It, our ordinance says five. So is that five bulls? Is it five horses? Is it five sheep?
Rooster.
All of those, all of those, uh, create a different amount of waste, obviously. So that's why we thought it would, it was something that at, at some point at least should be looked at.
Yeah.
And, um, yeah, it's not.
And the other thing too is what, what could happen is instead of referring to animals, we could refer to manure management practices.
Right. Well, and that's kind of how we looked, ended up looking at the case.
That's what it is.
Because, because of it being the Aquifer District, we realized that's what we're trying to protect.
Right.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
So October eleventh, we probably should put that, make sure that's on the agenda to discuss. Potential warrant.
Okay.
All right, where are we on those?
Regional impact notice. We had a regional impact notice from, I think it was Raymond again, about a large soil. Oh, shoot.
That was actually from one we received a while ago. That application has been before that board for over a year at this point anyway, so.
I was thinking it was familiar.
Yeah, that was, nothing's really moving through Raymond right now.
Yeah, so it was from RPC Rock and Planning Commission notifying July nineteenth of an earth excavation permit application before the Raymond Planning Board, which was declared a development of regional impact. And I think we, we did provide comment on this one previously.
Yeah, I thought we did.
Not specifically about the earth excavation side of it, but, um,
Traffic, I thought it was.
There's a five hundred and fifteen thousand square foot warehouse. So we had provided comment specifically about the, um, the traffic. One fifty-six, twenty-seven and, uh, in those areas to be considerate of those. And this one's not us, never mind. I don't know if they're going to us. That one's not on there, so. Anyway, I, I don't think there's any further comment from us to, to go out on that. There is the RPC's, like, decision, their, their memo about it, uh, is what they found. So I don't think we have anything to do on that. Maps, this was a big discussion. So basically, uh, we're talking about. So basically, uh, we're talking about amending to correct the Aqua map, uh, make it a better file to load easier online. And then there was a second map, which I'm blanking on which one it was, just changing the, uh-
Just changing the name.
The town, yeah, where it's a Marshall and the, and the Town Village District. Correcting that label to, to be, um, Town, Town Village District.
And just to close out on the Aquifer, I know Blair, you sent the response from Jackson.
Town Center District, sorry.
And then, Ed, you sent back some stuff, so is that, are you exactly, just go, we can kind of go back and forth and see if, what had sent changed anything or?
In Nottingham, so in, in the map that, the mapping online that Jackson has, the purple represents aquifers generally. The yellow represents stratified drift aquifers, which is what matches up with what the town's Aquifer District is.
What is the difference?
So I can explain to you, a stratified, so like when the glaciers retreat and it crumbles up all the ground and you end up with like a layer of, or layers of like kind of beat up rock, small, even sand and gravel, like down to that finer level. That's considered your stratified, stratified drift, tends to be what is easiest to tap into for, so it's kind of-
It's like your natural filter basically too, that's, yeah.
Yeah, that, I, I'm sure there's way more stuff to it than I can ever tell you about, but yes.
I didn't read the digest.
It's as opposed to like, as opposed to like a bedrock aquifer, it's just like you, you're almost like you're fracting. You gotta like get into the bedrock to find where like there's little, little cracks.
The waters are and stuff like that.
Stratified is where you'll see a lot of municipal try and be like, that's the easiest thing to get-
Yeah.
-water out of, so that's where they might protect to get a municipal well or something like that.
Right, cause it's all, the water's all in there between all those tiny little rocks.
Easier to get into, yeah, yeah.
There.
Usually higher, higher rate of, uh, higher pump rates you can get out of it.
And as I'm looking at it, you know, it looks like, uh, you know, the stratified drift is like concentrated around Romansford, Dover and probably, you know, down towards Portsmouth. Because that's where you're getting all of the watersheds coming in. That's probably where all of the glaciers retreated through and so it's like kind of the end of the road. Nottingham's kind of, has a little bit, but not much. Most of it is just difficult to access areas. So the Aquifer Protection District is intended to put an extra layer of protection over that good accessible water. As you said, probably where more municipal, uh, sources would draw from. If in fact the town ever did offer up, uh, you know, those, that-
Start opening that can.
Yeah, but I'm just making the point that yes, so, um, that's kind of what it is.
So there's no change, we're not proposing any change to the boundaries. That's the biggest thing, so I think that would require a warrant article, would require more input. The way the overlay district reads in our zoning is the location, the, the Aquifer Protection District is defined in the area, as the area shown on the map entitled Aquifer Protection District. So we'd wanna keep the title the same, um, there's no date on there, it's not as amended. So alls we're proposing is to fix, to get a better map, uh, a better version of it.
Better resolution.
And a better resolution and a, and a better online version to, to post. So it'd be re-adopting the map, but, um, no changes to the boundaries, so I don't think- So I think if we can get that for the next meeting or the one after that, whenever we have an opening on our meeting schedule, that, that one and then the, uh, the other one to, to save that way, we just say, you know, we put it on the agenda as, update Aquifer, uh, Aquifer Protection District map and, uh, update whatever the title is on that other one.
Okay.
And then we'll have to figure out how the costs go, if there's a cost for printing the new ones. Or if that's within our services.
You're saying you want to see it on the next agenda to vote on?
And that one or the one after, yeah, it's on, I think our next agenda is getting very far.
I think we're in October for putting stuff on now.
That's okay. Thank you. And then, cause yeah, SRPC is the one that printed all our maps, all the big, whatever size those are, three by three, four by four. Uh, a butter letter from Seven Berry Road, um, that's in the file for everybody. It's case, it's property specific, um, so it's kind of under advisement. I think that, I think it went to the building inspector, the town administrator and the select board as well. As I mentioned before, we are not an enforcement board. We can only act on applications that come before us. So if we do get a site plan for this property or any others, uh, we will be, that's when we would, um, really take that under guidance and consideration as, as in a butter notification. Not saying that the concerns aren't, um, valid or don't have weight to them, but I don't think there's anything we can do as a board at this time. We had a conceptual, it's non-binding, um, we represented information. They're a conceptual, we have to go by what we're presented. So if any of that was inaccurate, which I'm not saying it was, but I, I think there's gonna be, be something that has come from the town to, to push it to a site plan review.
An enforcement, you mean?
Enforcement or, yeah.
So, yeah, it's good. I would limit the conversation on this since it's not part of an application. Um, I did receive an email, uh, I guess this person was directed to me to ask about doing a site plan review. And I just responded back with, you know, here's the process, you need to hire a surveyor and off you go.
All right, thank you.
But that's basically the extent.
Excellent. Excellent.
Cool.
Uh, public comment, time of night, we always have for people to come in and talk to us about anything they want. Case specific, uh, not everybody understands the planning board, but nobody's here, so we'll move on. We have one set of minutes, uh, we've already pushed these, we can either push them again or tackle them. I think I had just a couple of minor edits. If I can find the minutes. I'll just address my three items. Uh, line one seventy-three, Mr. Veal stated that as presented, there was nothing yet, so add the words as presented. Line two sixty-six, uh, Mr. Veal advised that there is a state law and application with, it says state, but it's with the town. And then line two six-
I'm sorry, what line is that?
I'm going kind of fast, two sixty-six. The second word, the second time state appears, that should be town. Line two sixty-nine, um, Ms. Johnson to do, uh, I'm sorry. Where it says Ms. Johnson to do what she wishes with them, I think what we had said was Ms. Johnson to sell them. One last change. Uh, line three thirty-four, um, at the end of that sentence, add including alternates. So a quorum is at least four members, including alternates. That's it for me.
I'll make a motion to approve as amended.
Second.
A motion by Mr. McKinnon, second by Ms. Anderson to approve the minutes of August ninth, two thousand twenty-three as amended. Any further discussion? All's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All's post.
Nope, I, I'm agreeing.
Six zero zero, uh. Sorry, I just want to make sure we have some kind of- Select board, staff board member updates, we're almost there everybody, but-
I have none.
Nothing, I already spoke.
Uh, what the select board is, we will be, uh, taking the lead for the CIP. That was one of the questions that we, you know, we asked you to, the board to take. Uh, Tim Davero will be the lead for the CIP for the select board, so.
Do we have that?
Who's volunteering to, uh, the CIP for this board?
When, do we have a, a meeting date yet for when that's gonna start up?
Well, we, well, we need to know who's gonna be there, so the fact that we can start sending out, you know, what dates people can meet, stuff like this. So somebody here is gonna step up to be on that, um.
I already stepped up. You too, Sean, right?
I'm doing two jobs too, so get one, I'm on it.
I thought, do we vote?
I hope you really have to just do.
It was, uh-
Right.
I believe it was their CIP rep.
So that was one of the things that we did at that, we went over, we had conversations about all the stuff we just talked about tonight. You know, and impact fees and money going there, we talked about budget, we just, we got a meeting next, this Monday too, so.
So I think, again, back to the costs for this board, getting our fees changed will be a small piece of helping offset our costs. Potentially doing something different with, um, an escrow for reviews, but that would also be potentially including the cost of SRPC's reviews for us. Which would be all applications potentially. That way we budget for it, our contract. It's not gonna offset that a hundred percent, but even if it's fifty, sixty percent.
That makes a big difference in the, in the overall budget.
Yeah, and then, and I, I still think we're a very frugal board in the fact that this is our cost. At least twice a month, almost all the time. And there's generally, when we have a full board, seven, eight, nine of us in here. You know, no stipend or anything like that, and that's totally fine. But I just want to always put that out there, is, you know, there is no other cost from this board that's being accrued, you know? And there's a lot of professionals, everybody on here brings a different background and, and level of expertise and different things, so.
But the other thing too, Ed, is that our, our board is not, is not a net zero cost to the town because of the fact that there are the cost of supplies, the cost of printing, the cost of the ink for the printing, you know, the cost of a monofer, doing all of that work and stuff. So there is a lot of man hours that goes into both boards, the zoning and planning. And I, and I do think that in, as much as we can, we need to be passing those costs onto the people that we're here listening to the cases on.
Agreed, yeah, yeah, I would say with a reason, but I, I agree, I think we're on a path towards getting more balanced on that.
Yes, this is a great, great stuff in that direction.
I'll make a note to edit that tomorrow too, so I can send that back to John and Ellen directly, so it's on the agenda.
You do?
Yes.
Do you have anything for us?
I don't think so.
Uh, Ms. Mooney, uh, had shared a couple of things, um, fall forest hikes. The Conservation Commission, it's like are holding, and Nottingham Trails Committee, uh, are inviting individuals to, there's an autumn equinox hike on Terninko Conservation Area on Sunday, September twenty-fourth at eleven thirty AM. Uh, a forest walk and talk, Marsh Woods Conservation on Freeman Hall Road on Sunday, October eighth, eleven AM. These are beautiful parcels, uh, that are, we're very fortunate to have access to, um. And there's RSVP information, I believe this is online with the, the rec department.
Got that QR code and everything.
Trails Committee, I'm sorry, NottinghamTrails@gmail.com, conservation site. Uh, she'd also just, as a reminder, had sent something for us to review about the letter to the select board from twenty twenty-one, uh, from the Transportation Subcommittee. Of those objectives, scenic roads, medallion, I believe that's all set. Bicycle route siding signage, that was a request to get the town manager and BOS to request DOT to request, um, share the road and bike route signs on one fifty-two, one fifty-six. Since these are designated state roads, designated bike route roads. And then, um, improvements on one fifty-two, one fifty-six. So we can go about that, talk about that again, um, at a different date. I don't want to take up too much time tonight, this is already late. I think that was all she had submitted over.
That's all I saw.
Uh, so I think that was it for me, I don't think I had anything. If I did, it's, it's, it's out of my head by now, so, Ms. Anderson?
Uh, just really quick, so, um, DOT's ten-year plan at holding listening sessions in the ones in the, um, SRPC, um, region on the twenty-sixth of this month, Durham Town Hall at three PM. Rot, on the twenty-eighth, Rochester City Hall at four PM. And on the twenty-eighth, um, Dover City Hall at seven PM. So if everybody's really wanting to have some fun.
There's also documents for that online too. They already have a lot of documents, I don't know about that.
Yeah, I believe the three projects in Nottingham, unless they've changed, were the ones I mentioned earlier, National one fifty-two, one fifty-six intersection to change to ninety degrees.
Yep.
Bridge rebuild, uh, one fifty-two over North River, which I believe is on track to happen at some point.
They've done some testing on the pavement.
Bridge widening during rehab reconstruction to create wide shoulders, National one fifty-six over the Potawatari River. And then we had sent in a request to DOT and I think some other towns might have as well for corridor study, which, um-
Right.
We'll see about that one.
So, so I know Town Hall, it's rated R, so SRPCs.
Uh, if this, if this was something you want to know about, let me know, I'll reach out and call. I don't have anything at the moment, um, I did email you some stuff about, uh, the training, uh, it wasn't between you, it was-
Legislative update.
Yeah, legislative update.
Those are fun.
So, yeah, if everybody has a chance to look at that, thank you for sending that.
So that'll be something we can discuss at a later point, but that's it.
So on, on, for, right now on the twenty-seventh, we have, uh, Smoke Tree, President's of Fort Hill. I know that's been continued to that night and I expect that one to most likely be here. We continued that site plan to that night, which, uh, would likely be a, a, a smaller case. Anything else that I'm missing that we've continued to that night?
What about the Route Four?
The Business Park?
Yeah, Business Park.
Is, is, is it a problem if we keep the continued items on the agenda, but say that it's been continued? Cause I lose track all the time about what I have coming up. It's not until I get the agenda, I know what ones we're talking about, I don't mind.
You mean if like it skips a meeting and like, but still listed or something, if it's not being heard?
I could, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, I didn't know when, I didn't know when the Business Park, I thought the Business Park had continued-
It did, yeah.
To the, I, I thought it was this month.
Anyway, so-
I can send some sort of update, you might be people in the office, that's what we're not-
Yeah. Yeah, I think maybe if we have like our own little lists or something that we keep track of that's separate from the public agenda, cause I think that would potentially cause confusion, um.
Just an FYI too.
And the application deadline has already been gone through, so we shouldn't get any new applications for that, for that meeting, unless it's conceptual or something that doesn't hit the deadline.
I won't be here on the twenty-seventh.
Any, oh, if you don't have any new ones, anything that I might have to comment on, you won't get until Monday.
I appreciate everybody's time tonight, it's a long meeting, a lot, a lot, um, motion to adjourn, anyone?
So moved.
One second, adjourn.